Ready.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break when we open back up. Yeah, I'll come back from closed session, then we'll take a quick five-minute break. Okay, we're back from closed session. City Attorney, do we have any reportable action tonight?
No reportable action.
With that, we will adjourn our closed session and come back for the open meeting in five minutes. Ready, City Attorney? All right, with that, we will start our Selma City Council regular meeting. It's March 4th, 2024. Oh, sorry, Council, we had a little thing there. March 18th, 2024. It is 6:13. Thank you, everybody, for your understanding. Our closed session ran a little long tonight. So we're starting at 6:13 PM tonight in the Selma City Council chambers, 1710 Tucker Street, Selma, California, 93662, and the teleconference location of the Craft House at Cork, 420 Alice Al Road, Solvang, California, 93464. The teleconference phone number is 301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 891-6864-5005. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand. We will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Tonight's invocation will be by Pastor Shannon Schwab, retired pastor and chaplain of the Sheriff's Department, Fresno County Sheriff's Department.
Heads with me. Gracious God, we come to you tonight with thanks in our hearts, being ever so grateful for the many blessings you bestow upon us daily, not the least of which is your love, care, and concern for all people. Tonight, as the various leaders and department heads within our community come together to discuss the business at hand, we ask that you grant wisdom and guidance to each one. I pray that you would bless Mayor Scott Robertson, Mayor Pro Tem Beverly Cho, Council members John Trejo, Sarah Guerra, and Blanca Mendoza Navarro, who have already put in a full day, I am sure, and therefore they could use a refreshing of your spirit. Give them clarity of thought as they consider the matters before them. And help us all as citizens of Selma to work together to make this a place where we can grow, learn, and care, looking out for the needs of others with the same care in which we look out for our own. Teach us about your grace, how to live in it, and be guided by it according to your will for our lives. We ask these things in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Please stand, let you lose it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please, City Clerk?
Councilmember Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Trejo?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here.
Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation, items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code Section 54954.2B. Oral communications at this time-
Mayor, if I may, I apologize. There is a request to table the item with regard to the pride flag fee waiver application, just because there were technical issues with the noticing of the agenda, and so that request has been to push it to the April 1st meeting.
Okay. Do we table it now, or should we table it at the time of the agenda item, or do we need to take a vote on that? Or consensus? What consensus do?
You should take a vote on it. I would do it right now at this point.
Is there a motion to table that agenda item on the pride flag because of the timing of the matter? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
I did.
Second?
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, oral communications at this time. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and direct them towards the city council only. Any oral communications at this time?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members. My name is Nick Sohoda, and my address is 2511 Logan Street, Selma. I'm the owner of Central Valley Engineering. I established my business in 2008 to provide engineering, architectural, and surveying services in my community, including Selma and where I grew up. Over the past 16 years, I've observed that the pace of the work in the city is significantly slower compared to the other cities. And urgently, we need to expedite our process as waiting period of five to seven years or longer is impractical for residential and primarily due to the financial constraints. My intention is stating this business was to contribute to the betterment of expansion of our community. However, I encourage the challenges in getting projects approved smoothly. I often require considerable effort to be pushed them through, which is not conducted to the efficient business practice. Some of the projects I have successfully completed, including the newly-built Chevron gas station and a Starbucks is building right now to the entrance to the downtown. I've also undertaken a subdivision project, apartments complex duplexes, various commercial establishment, such as work on the Gordores and also the Sylvia Avenue, the Chrysler Driven Church. Additionally, I have worked in funeral homes, residential properties, and commercials ventures, such as the Java Express, Sierra Market, El Mercado's Market, and we have also handled facade for renovation for the four dealerships. And currently, I have over 10 ongoing projects. Some of these projects are progress for seven to eight years. That's too long. And while I frankly hear that council members about the need more development and housing, it's crucial that we streamline process in the planning, building, and engineering department. Moreover, the impact fees in Selma are considerably higher compared to the neighboring city, like a king's word. I have a fee structures here with me for the king's word, and their amount is approximately 5.6% for construction costs of the construction cost where their fees, including the impact fees and well as the other process reviewing fees and everything. And I urge you to expedite the approval of process to the timeline to the eight to the 12 months. And we have more housing options, which is the benefit of the Selma Unified School District, as well as the overall growth of the prosperity of our city. Currently, we have over 300 housing units in the pipeline, and which is four subdivision, along with the numerous new businesses waiting to development. Therefore, I implore you to prioritize and accelerations of these projects for the betterment of the city of Selma and the future of Selma. Thank you for your time considerations. I look forward to positive actions on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. And my name is Ajit Sankeel, and I live in Fresno. I invest in this city in Selma since 2012. My first investment involves starting development of Canales State Subdivision. The previous developer abandoned their project halfway through the first phase. So I took over and redo everything and develop 157 lots, which only 15 lots left over, and everything is done, which, as you can imagine, is a significant cost and impact fee and permit fee and the city requirement developing this additionally after the housing. It cost me $30,000 per lot, and I paid $20,000 to the city fee. Every house, which is almost like a $3 million, I paid to the city. Either way, on the fees or the school fees, I've been contributing a lot to the community. Today, I'm here to request the progress of my project south of China, which I applied since 2012. It involves 80 unit of senior living people and 30,000 square feet of retail development, including gas station and car wash. Unfortunately, your department have not been brought into annex in the city yet despite all the effort. I have spoken to numerous planners, but my stories seem to be stuck there. This project is a 10-acre parcel, and I would like to request expedite the process in the city. Truly, I desire more development. If city desire- We already have a city water, sewer, and storm system, so I fail to understand the delay and confuse them why my project have to wait until the other development and progress on the value view. Once again, if you want to see this town grow, I request you expedite this project and urge you to streamline this process and issue all the plans and permit. I hope within eight to 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Anyone else with oral communications at this time?
Jim Abbott, 1701 Dinuba. You know, this is, you know, last council meeting, we had Mr. Dwight here. There are some issues on this, on the same development issue, cost factors. And here these Sohoda, Mr. Gill here, same situation. I mean, town's got to grow, but we also got to be very smart in how we grow. But we have to look at the cost factors of other cities, what they're charging, you know, to be the comparison, you know. I don't know what, you know, I'm sure that Kingsbury's probably a little cheaper than us, probably Fowler, because I see their growth is pretty fast. And I think they're a small community, but yet they seem to be growing faster than us. We have to sit there and say, what's going on here, guys? Either we're lagging on our building permits and not streamlining them very quickly, or the building inspector is, maybe he's got too much work on his hands, and he needs a little help. Because we have, so far, we have two developers that have come forward, had the same issue, the city of Selma. So there should be some leeway, way to pressure to take care of these people, because in the past, we were very streamlined in operation. We had, you know, engineer, everything went very smooth. You know, Raven Homes, all these other homes, Virginia Gardner, and, you know, all these, these things were very fast and streamlined. I don't know what's happening now, so I don't know. We have a new staff in our city that don't know it, know how our city operates. Let's take a little step back and take a look and see if we get these developers on board, because they're the investments in our city of Selma. You know, they're big stakeholders, and I think when people have a big stakeholder, they help our schools, they help our roads, tax trainings. They are good entities for our community, and we should help them in a way we can. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Honorable members of the city council, I stand before you today with a profound sense of urgency and purpose, representing a project that embodies the very essence of progress and community enrichment.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Kevin Pennu, and I live here in Selma, California, and been born and raised here my whole life. And we're kind of here, one of our projects we have going on by the hospital. And I feel like with a profound sense of urgency and purpose, representing a project that embodies the very essence of progress and community enrichment, our proposal for the development of 900 rows comprising 42 lots symbolizes not only growth, but also an unwavering commitment to addressing the pressing issue of low inventory to Selma's housing market. The need for more housing options in our city is palpable with demand consistently outspacing its supply. By embarking on this venture, we aim not only to provide homes, but to foster a sense of belonging and stability within our community. We recognize the significance of this endeavor, not merely as a construction project, but as a catalyst for positive change. Moreover, I must emphasize the timeliness of our proposal. We come before you with a sense of urgency, understanding that time is of the essence. Our subdivision project seeks to expedite through planning, building, and improvement plans. The reasons for this urgency are manifold. Encompassing financial constraints, market demands, and the immediate needs of prospective homeowners, delay is not an option. Every moment lost is a missed opportunity to address the housing crisis gripping our city. We implore the council to recognize the gravity of the situation and to extend their full support to ensure the swift realization of this project. In conclusion, I urge each member of this esteemed council to consider the broader implications of our proposal. Beyond the construction of houses, we are laying the foundation for a brighter, more inclusive future for Selma. Let us seize the opportunity to make a tangible difference in the lives of our fellow citizens. Thank you, guys, for your time and consideration.
Anyone else?
My name is Carmen Hill. I live on Selma Mobile Estates. Issue with the license. It's expensive. There's a lot of us that cannot, not just me, but other little guys that go to this and do this, can't afford to do it. Able the possibility of doing something with the license fees. But there's an urgency, because a lot of us want to do the raisin festival. Raisin festival is about six weeks away. How many people are going to miss the opportunity to help do things for the city, like face painting and other little businesses that come out and do the raisin festival? They're not going to be able to afford it. I can't. So if you guys don't do something about this soon, I won't be there. And I count on that every year, and the others do too. So I'm begging you to please think about it this week. Do something about it, so the little guys like myself can do something for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else with any comments at this time? Anyone online or on the phone?
As a reminder to those calling in or using Zoom, please use your raise your hand feature or press star nine to raise your virtual hand. Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to our first special presentation of the evening, which is a certificate of recognition for Selma resident and Fresno Police Department Sergeant Leonard Cabrera.
So good evening. Today, I want to honor, I want to come on over to this side. I want to honor one of our residents in our community for a, let me read this, and then we'll go on. Leonard Cabrera is an example of the quality of people we have living in our community. And I'd like to recognize him this evening. He was recently awarded Employee of the Year, or should I say Officer of the Year at the Fresno Police Department, where he has worked for the past 20 years. His current position is Sergeant in the Magic Multi-Agency Gang Enforcement Division of the Fresno Police Department. After graduating high school, he joined the police department. Leonard chose Selma as his home with his family, which includes his wife of 18 years, Erica Cabrera Franco. Leonard is dedicated father and community member volunteering to coach his youth sports here in our community. When he's not working hard at Fresno Police Department, he has two children, Luke and Emma. My personal thanks goes out to Leonard for being an example, kind people we have here in our community. And I just want to make sure that we recognize him, because at the end of the day, you know, we look at what's going on in our community, and we need to see that we have people that are actually stepping out in this community. And, you know, not only being a neighbor, I really commend you for all the hard work you've been doing, and I really want to make sure that our community recognizes them and acknowledges that we do have individuals in this community that are really working hard towards getting things out there in our community. So I would love for everyone to give him a standing ovation, clap, and at the same time, we'll give him some time to talk, please. And with that, Leonard, I want to recognize it being awarded for the city of Fresno Police Employee of the Year, Sergeant Cabrera, dedicate Selma native, has served the city of Fresno adly for two decades. Congratulations on this outstanding achievement. Sergeant Cabrera presented this 18th day of March by Mayor Robertson, Mayor Pro Tem Bev Cho, Councilwoman Sarah Guerra, Blanca Navarro, and John Trejo.
I'm sure you're gonna say some more.
Well, thank you. I'm extremely humbled and honored to accept this recognition here. I'll make it really short. I appreciate all the support from the council, the community. So I thank the council for all their support for public safety and everything you guys do. So thank you very much for that.
It's a smoke on him.
Okay, that will move on to our next special presentation, which is introduction of new staff, Public Works and Administration Departments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have new staff to introduce, and I think we'll start with Public Works, our Public Works Director, Michael Hahn.
Sorry. I would like to introduce my new supervisor, Ulysses Maravilla. Very excited to have Ulysses with us. Ulysses is actually on week three, I believe, right now, and he's doing a great job.
And I think next we have Administrative Services Director, Janie Vanegas.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I would like to introduce a new member to our team. We have Jeremiah O'Leary. Jeremiah will be the first person that, when citizens call, he will be the person that is taking their calls, and he will also be the very first person that you see when you come into city hall. Jeremiah.
And that'll do it for that item.
Thank you. And welcome to the new employees. Welcome to Selma. Thank you for choosing Selma. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion, by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Does council have any items they would like removed tonight from the consent calendar? I would like item B removed from the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve items A, C, D, and E?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, thank you. So this is item B, consideration of a resolution consenting to the use of public facilities regarding the proposed rerouting of traffic on Highland Avenue for participants of the annual Selma Seek Parade.
Yes, do you have a specific question, Mayor?
I believe we have members of the community tonight who are staging this event. Did they want to weigh in on the event this year for the Seek Parade? Did anybody want to say anything?
Excuse me, was that part of a consent?
Yes, yeah, it was item B of the consent. Yes, yeah, it was item B of the consent calendar.
And it wasn't pulled, right? So should we be discussing it?
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro, the item was requested to be pulled by Mayor Robertson.
Oh, it was. I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
No problem.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Singh. I live here in the rural area of Selma on Dineva Avenue. And for lack of sounding stupid, what was it that you wanted to know from us?
Wanted to ask if you had any input on the Seek Parade this year. It's been a while since we had it and just wanted to get your input.
Yeah, definitely. It's an annual event. It'll be held again in April. And if I'm not mistaken, they can correct me, I think it's from the 12th to the 14th of the April. And we plan to have it pretty much in a similar manner that we've had it in years past. We will certainly, we have been reaching out to the city itself, the department, if I'm not mistaken, for permits perhaps and working with the plan. We've alerted Alert Light for their input into how to stage and how to do all that. And then also we have current talks going on with both Caltrans and CHP. Caltrans obviously for the 99 closures and then roadway closures on 43 generally at Nebraska, south of town where Ajit Gil's housing project is. And then certainly CHP to coordinate. Those closures were also work alongside us to facilitate along with the chief and perhaps the sheriff's department on the safety aspect of that. And beyond that, probably about, if I had to guess, probably be comparable like in years past, about at least 15,000, give or take a couple thousand people coming into town and being a part of the facilities along with the vendors who come on an annual basis and participate in that. And then certainly all the people from the different parts of the valley, mostly Sikhs, but the temple is open at four doors to any and everybody in this community, any other community want to come and see what the event is like or partake in the event with us. Or just come and share their time with us, okay?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Is there anything more specific that you needed? Or is there something more that you need?
No, I appreciate your weighing in on the event. Did you want to say anything, council member?
Ms., Harvey, I just want to, I want to relay a message since the mayor pulled this up. You know, it's an exciting event. We've, uh, we've been going and we've been participating. I want to share something with you that, you know, not only my wife, I think, Mayor Pro Tem Cho and Councilwoman Blanca Navarro, last year when we walked it, I think everybody bought their own outfits and talked about, you know, being able to wear it. And I also have spoke to other people and I want to relay that, I know.
Was that outfit large enough?
No, I didn't get one for myself. And I want to share this, you know, Harvey, me and Harvey go back a long time, so I'll give him that opportunity, you can say that. So, but I want to say that there's so many people from not the Sikh community coming to this event. And it is, it is, it is because of the event that you guys have been doing. And we just, I just, I want to, to thank you guys for everything you guys have been doing because at the end of the day, our staff, you know, we find it sometimes that we're kind of maybe telling you, hey, you got to do this. But in reality, it goes back to safety and, you know, I'm happy that you guys are, we had a good dialogue with our staff because that's one of the most important things.
Let me, let me pause you, which I hope I can, for a couple of minutes. First thing, chief's here. I had a conversation with the chief on another matter. It's an unfortunate thing, but that's neither here nor there for this conversation. But I've reached out to the chief to have more uniform personnel. And we told him that we pick up the tab because we, our priority number one were anything else, safety. And whether you spell it from the Y to the S or from the S to the Y, it all means the same thing. At the end of the day, we want to make sure the impression that council members have gotten by being there, that it's safe, anybody who comes here feels safe. And every time they attend at any point of that, that should be the first and most prevalent. There's only one thing about it that's safe. Everything else can go to hell in a handbasket except the safety. We cannot jeopardize that, nor will we, because at the end of the day, this is all predicated on good faith and on being safe. And chief, I've asked you for extra personnel and I mean that, and you let me know. We've also reached out to your good buddy, Zononi, and asked him from the sheriff department for him. I think Paul Sahoda will mention that, or he can come and attest to the fact that we have a conversation going. Our first priority and our last priority of the day, everybody come, everybody have a good time, everybody invite themselves well, enjoy, but safe. Come safe, go safe, okay? So what was the other thing you mentioned about the camaraderie, I guess? And as far as thanking us, I think it really, you don't need to thank us because you folks come and participate and you guys are the ones we, we need to thank. We really do, I'm being honest. And I'm not, you know, just throwing words out, we need to thank you and all the city personnel and all the city citizens, like Panu was saying about all the good work and chief with all, you guys make it what it is. Let's keep it going to the extent and to the time that God allows us or the city mandates allow us to do this, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Singh. Anything else?
Yeah. There's a couple of items that were brought up to our attention, and that's part of the reason we're here because one was we had to apparently go house to house and notify the people along the route with a letter that we're having a permit, I mean, this parade. And that itself is an issue or going to be an issue. Can you imagine going to everybody, every knock on every door along the parade? That ain't going to happen, okay? As much as somebody may say, well, that's, that's, that's a requirement that's hard to meet, impossible to meet. Can you imagine we go knock on somebody's door and he's got a gun on you? Or can you imagine this guy goes with his turban and he gets, you know, insulted or somebody else? Or can you imagine a pit bull coming after Harvey Singh? The city don't have enough money for all that, okay? At the end of the day, so those, that's, we will put it in the paper and we will use your signboard to advertise our route. Anybody and everybody knows, and we'll put it in the local paper. We can't knock everybody's door and let them know that we're having this parade. I hope it's understood that it's just impractical. But that was brought to our attention. That was one of the reasons we're here. What was the other thing? Oh, and apparently in our culture, we are, we're our, we provide food, we provide meals, whether it's a regular function or big function like this. And it's all volunteer, all the food and all the cooking is all volunteer. Beyond that, because this is like a new year for us, a lot of the vendors, this is their main time, much like the Christmas for the Christian community, this is the main time that they make money. And so they come, they sell things. Certainly they're in it for profit because we live in America. This is not Russia where you just do it for the fun of it, for the community. You do it because you're a capitalist system. But they do end up donating part of their proceeds from that day. And it's going to be impractical to ask them to get, like Mrs. Hill asked, it's going to be impossible to, impractical to ask them to pay a fee to sell their product. That's a given. They're part of the culture. They're providing a different service, much like Johnny's clothing and what have you not for that day, okay? For somebody else's clothing. So if you want to charge them a fee, that's going to be a little bit inconvenient, okay?
Got it. Duly noted, we'll bring it up at future agenda items.
Have it to where it's fun for all, but more important, it's a religious before it's fun, but it's also fun when we share it with everybody, but safety. At the end of the day, I guarantee you to the extent.
Absolutely. This will be my 13th Agar Kirtan and I'm honored to have an invitation and we just wanted to be taken.
Not only to the council members, but all the city staff and all our citizens, please come, please enjoy. The worst thing to do is go home a couple of pounds heavier than when you came.
I know you'll see to that.
In Johnny's case, I'll get some outfit on top of that, okay?
Thanks very much.
But beyond that, is there any other questions or was that satisfactory? Good? Paul, did you want to add here? This is Paul Sahoda, okay?
My name is Paul Sahoda. I live in Selma, out in the country, went to Selma schools and grew up here almost all my life. But this is our 30th Seek Parade for Selma. So I just got made aware of a couple of items and I think Harvey touched on both of them. And first I'll start with the safety side of things. I've been in touch with Johnson on here, County Sheriff, and I've asked him to make sure that he can provide some officers for that day and invited him. We've got his assurance and the local sergeant here has been in touch with us. He says he was instructed to give me five, six people. I said, I don't know, but I'll check with my committee how many we need, but they've been really cooperative. So obviously, safety is first. You all are guests and you're all invited. Right when I got here, I got alerted two different items. One of them was this notifying the route, the participants or the, the people that would be impacted. And I was, we've all along, we've always put it in the Selma enterprise. And if we need to do it somewhere else, we can, but I think it's a little bit, a little bit overburdening to try to go to each individual house and notify them personally. That's one request. The other one is this, one Selmer resume, Adam just touched on it too, is the possibly notifying that the, the people that come there sell their, their bears or, or, and it's, it's, it's a temple, it's a fundraising. Part of the, what they sell, they get back to the temple. And some of these guys that come out of LA, some of them come out of the Bay Area or Sacramento area. And if they have to get a permit, I was made aware of it's like a six, seven page project or process. And these guys generally show up Saturday afternoon set up and they're, they're gone by Sunday afternoon. So that's, that's especially for a religious institution. If it was a private enterprise that was conducting business, you're, it's just rightfully dues or sales tax that should be due to the city. But this particular situation is that it's a fundraiser for a, for a nonprofit and we look for some sort of waiver on that. And this is the first time we're even getting made aware of. So I don't know if it's something new or if it's a rumor mill, but I hope it's not, we can find a way to get through it.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Sol, I appreciate it. That, that's good, Harvey, thank you. We're good. All right, we got to, got to kind of move, we got a full agenda tonight, but we got, got the point, I'm sure your concerns are, had been very well heard. Is there a motion to approve item B?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to regular business, the first item is been tabled until a future meeting. So we'll move on to item two, which is now the first item on our regular business agenda, Selma Animal Services Center Facility Assessment Presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, our chief of police and our animal services staff is here to make a presentation with regard to the status of the animal shelter when we took over as of January 1st, you know, what, what the circumstances were when that transition was made, what the progress has been since then and other information that's relevant. Obviously, you know, we don't have all the information yet from the previous operator Second Chance Animal Shelter, so there will be additional information forthcoming to the council once we're able to obtain that information. But for the time being, we wanted to make sure that the council and the community was aware of kind of what we were facing as of January 1st. So chief, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, boss. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I'm going to introduce Terry Rockhold, who is our special projects manager overseeing our animal services program. So what I'll, what I'll say is initially when we spoke with Terry, her, our role was to bring her in to do an assessment on the animals themselves. As you, as you all know, it was a very kind of unstable process on how we were going to roll out animal services in January of 2024. And what we ended up with was taking animal services back under our umbrella and facilitating this program. We were lucky enough to bring Terry on board and when we took over, there were no animals on site. Thus, the focus shifted to an assessment of the facility and then an assessment of the programming itself and how we move that forward for the future. So I'll, I'll kind of, that's kind of how we came to where we're at. Again, there's still information forthcoming, so we'll, we'll get that information as it comes available to us. But right now, I'm going to introduce Terry Rockhold. She is our special projects manager that oversees our Selma Animal Services Program. And more importantly, Terry's expertise is, it's too much to mention, but what I'll say is a large part of Terry being here is not our service today, but what our service will be in 10, in 20, in 30 years and preparing for that growth and what that service looks like. So with that, I'll introduce Terry Rockhold.
Councilmembers, Mayor Robertson? We began January 1st, 2024. I'll go through a short snippet of the bullet points and then we'll, we'll look at some photos. We began operations on January 1st after the contract ended with the previous vendor. As chief mentioned, we were prepared to enter the facility and provide a comprehensive assessment of the animals and the facility's condition. On our arrival, all of the animals had been removed, including animals with known owners and dogs serving legal quarantine holds. Also, as chief mentioned, we were not able to gain access to any historical data to run any sort of comprehensive reports on length of stay, calculate true capacity for care or prepare for the field services needs. So what we're left with essentially is creating our own data and then creating our own path forward. The following slides are the conditions that we encountered upon our arrival. Several pictures of the parking lot.
Excuse me, Ms. Rocko, could you speak in the microphone just a little bit?
Sure.
We can hear you.
The several pictures of the parking lot. Entry into facility, this is where the intake shed in the begin, in the, in the parking lot. This is where the C train was removed. This is the parking lot area and the kennel area. The first is one of the kennel areas to the side, the backside of the main building. And this is the office entryway. Intake area, which is the first building you come upon when you enter the facility to the left. Third picture is part of the cages, metal cages that animals were in and obviously the facility inside. Office in the main building, the public entered. These are closeups of the kennel inside of the kennel building. Metal areas with debris. This is more kennel area inside. Tops of kennels, these are the drains inside. And right is also a closeup of the tops of the kennels. Some of the efforts, which was a massive group effort from Public Works. Thank you, Mike. All are fantastic. Kennels were power washed multiple times, rounds of disinfecting to sanitize the kennels with a rescue disinfectant, which is a hydrogen peroxide based cleaner. Enormous amount of trash is removed from the facility and piled for Public Works Holloway. Drains were cleaned and cleared inside and out. Parking lot was pressure washed by your chief of police to remove debris, feces and hair. The office walls were scrubbed, bleached, and the holes were repaired. Office and the bathroom walls painted and the floors were sealed. We repaired the shower and removed the makeshift kennel. And we are still working with Pest Control Company to address the spider-taken cockroach infestation throughout all areas of the facility. Disposed of discarded Sharps containers. We emptied freezer. We removed cobwebs, dust, and dirt accumulation on the kennel building ceiling of shed cages and walls. We replaced the vanity in the bathroom that was chewed up. And enormous amount of feces accumulation in all the outdoor play yards. This is several more Holloways from Public Works and the Police Department. Holloways from Public Works and, uh, the Police Department. This is a, a little closer view of, of what, uh, Mike's phenomenal people helped us with. Approximately 220,000 has been spent getting the facility up to operational standards. The H-back unit was replaced in the main building. The trash hallway took several days. Room was gutted and the urine soaked from rodents insulation was all removed. The roof was repaired in that particular building. Kennel doors were repaired, interior kennel walls repaired and secured. The landscaping was addressed, bushes and the tree trimming and sprinkler repairs. Parking lot asphalt holes were patched. Uh, the shelter building was pressure washed and painted on the outside. Stainless puppy cages repaired and the platform, mobile platform built, which was huge. Interior doors and the windows stripped and cleaned of fly strike and filth. Office walls sealed from kennels and mold was removed. Outlet covers replaced and the exit signs were added.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if I, there's a mistype there. We've spent approximately $22,000 in expenses to get the facility up to an operational standard. So I, that's, uh, I wasn't wearing my glasses when I text. And I got big thumbs for a little, little phone. So I apologize. That was 22,000. That's my error.
Thank you for not throwing me under the bus. Appreciate that. So, um, new day. After cleanup, this is the office where the public, um, enters. This is, uh, the take room and the outside of the building. The, uh, shelter intake, uh, obviously all of the insulation was removed. The walls repaired and painted. The roof leaks were fixed. Uh, we added some new equipment so that the intake procedures could be completed properly. And on the bottom was painted on exterior with blue trim, uh, and the rain gutters were cleared and roofs were checked for damage. Uh, another phenomenal job by Mike's peeps. Uh, the yards were cleared from an enormous amount of animal feces. Trees and bushes were trimmed, uh, the sprinklers were repaired, uh, the lawns are manicured. And this allows the shelter dogs to get out, uh, several times a day. And then, uh, uh, it also helps us work on basic commands and just, uh, basic behavior training. So these, a quick snippet of the kennels, uh, they're clean and organized and comfortable. Uh, we use coranda beds which, uh, lift them up from the floors. The floors are not sealed, so we've got some drainage issues. So, um, about 30 kennels in here, but 30 of them are not necessarily, um, appropriate for animals. So we've got them up on beds, um, and then they're, they have daily enrichment and obviously outside playtime for, for all of them. Next steps, which, uh, I think is the most important thing in this entire thing is just next, next better steps and, and on. So we're working to create, uh, comprehensive policies and procedures for the shelter and the field services. Uh, we provide the community with monthly transparent data reporting. We'll see that on, uh, typically in monthly on our, on our Facebook page. We're in the midst of seeking grants and, and funding sources to provide animal resources, just spay and neuter. Uh, we're looking at ordinances, revisions that make the most sense for animals and their owners. Uh, and we're offering some low cost services to our community. This is an example of one of the programs. It's an out, uh, afternoon adventures and essentially folks come, uh, typically on Saturdays. Uh, we speak to them, staff decides what dog is best for them and, uh, away they go. Um, some of them take them to the park, some of them take them for a pup cup. It really kind of depends. Some of them take them home. Uh, kicked off on Saturday, the ninth, and seven dogs participated in that program on the first day. And I think we had another three or four.
Go out.
Last Saturday. And then, uh, locked a dog at lunch today, so we're going to count that. Uh, this is also something we're, we're quite proud of already. Um, we've received positive feedback from local businesses, former employees, community members and animal owners on the changes to the facility and the level of service. Uh, several of those are from Facebook followers and then, uh, one is from an adopter. And just as a note, all of the dogs and the cats in this, uh, presentation are Selma Animal Services animals. No canned pictures. Also something we're quite proud of, grant funding and some donations. We have already received two grants from UC Davis and the Council of Animals. Uh, we received a $5,000 welcome grant to assist with the programming of our choice, um, and we've obviously chosen spay and neuter. Uh, received, we received another 10,005 to purchase more animal cages and housing, uh, and those will be typically stainless steel. Um, cages where smaller animals or cats will go. We've had Dr. Dana Wagner from UC Davis visit the shelter and insert portals and cages that were on site, uh, to maximize the efficiency, uh, and comfort for the animals. Dr. Wagner also advised staff on shelter flow and made suggestions to retrofit the current kennels that we have. Uh, and Central Valley Lioness Club donated $250 to our shelter enrichment program. Community spay and neuter. We've launched our community low cost spay and neuter program for owned cats. Um, Selma residents paid 25 co-pay for each cat. We've had two surgery days resulting in 35 cats fixed and we will fix another 30 this month. Memberships and partners that we, uh, are connected to, Best Friends Animal Society, National Animal Control Association, Shelter Pals, Shelter Policy and Legal Services, which is an offshoot of San Francisco SPCA, Shelter Pet Data Alliance, uh, which has to do with just statistics and transparency. California Animal Welfare Association, which is our state humane, uh, Shelter Animals Count, which is another database for transparency. And then Matt's University, which is just a, a fundraising arm, but also, um, just a, essentially a virtual learning university. This is, um, an example of our shelter management software. It's Pet Point. Uh, obviously allows for real time data entry. Anything that comes into the shelter is, is, uh, goes through a, a, uh, pretty intense in intake with vaccinations and information in the, uh, into the database immediately. Uh, and that allows for accurate data and ensures, uh, information for the community and the city leaders. Had a couple microchip clinics. Uh, we held two for residents of Selma. First clinic was held, uh, at our open house and that was resulting in 52 chips being implanted. Our second clinic was on March 16th and additional 55 pets were microchipped. And, um, we're excited. We're excited for the future. We're excited to build this thing. Going to be great. So, uh, I'll take any questions.
Thank you for your report. Director Rockhold, do we have any, um, questions from the council? Anybody from the public? Any input? Come on up, sir.
My name is Santiago Segarra. You probably remember me. 2209 Thompson. Um, a couple of things. This assessment was supposed to have been done by the people who took it over back in December. If you look back at your December, um, minutes, it states on that it was supposed to be done by the people who currently have it. It was supposed to be done during, uh, the last month of operation by second chance. This was done after. My question is, for God's sake, where was all this help? Back then, didn't you guys own the building back then? The roof repairs, the road and stuff, all the stuff, where was that at before? It seemed to me like you were setting him up to fail. Shouldn't we have been doing all that stuff? While they were there? I mean, come on. It seemed like there was a, a push to just get rid, get rid of all these people. They, they say that, you know, they got 52 dogs, second chance, sent out, adopted over 150 animals in one month. They should be praised and applauded for that. And they, they never killed any dogs except the ones that were sick or aggressive. So, you know, of course, some of the people in the council never wanted to acknowledge it. But I'm here to tell you, they did a hell of a job for what they were given. All these, um, microchip clinics, all this, where was that before? Where was that? Where was the painting? Everything else was done now. They could have done it before and the place would have been looking nice. When you have 150 animals in there and you're, most of your people are volunteers, of course, you're going to run into issues. And I know some of you recognize that and you, you try to do your best to help out, but this should have been done a long time ago. Not now. After they got rid of the dogs, you just came in, cleaned it out, fixed it up and now we're doing a one, of course you're doing a wonderful job. Then to second chance because they, they took care of the animals and they're still taking care of them. Just so you know, they're, they didn't, they're still taking the strays, sending them to rescues, doing what they can for the animals. Because I can tell you, the new shell, the new shelter, they're not picking up every animal out there. Uh, you pride yourself on Facebook? Look on Facebook. There's always animals out there being posted that are, they're calling the police, they're calling, uh, sometimes people don't answer, the shelter doesn't answer. So there's still out there running around. So I ask you, are they doing a better job? Or you're just saying they're doing a better job? That is the question. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public tonight? Do we have anyone on the phone or online who'd like to make a comment at this time?
As a reminder to the callers online and calling in, please use your raise your hand feature. We will add you to the meeting queue. For those calling in, please dial star nine and that will raise your virtual hand. Mayor Robertson, at this time I see no hands raised.
Thank you for that and city clerk. Um, I had a couple of questions from the first, the first, um, page. One of the, one of the quotes was all animals were removed, even those with owners. Were they, um, reunited with the owners? What does that mean?
Again, Mr. Mayor, we're unable to answer that question because the information is not being given to us from Second Chance Animal Shelter.
How do you know that they were removed? If they, if you don't have the information, how do you know that they were removed and they had owners?
Because when we got to the facility, there were no animals on site.
No, I'm, Mike, I'm sorry. I'm not making myself clear. How do you know that the animals that were removed had, had owners if you don't have those records that showed that they had owners?
When, when animals are quarantined or we're taking possession of them, we are, uh, mandated to have a hearing with the pet owner. That information is gathered when the animal is taken. Um, we reached out for those hearings and, uh, the pet owners advised that, uh, their pets were in certain locations. Um, but they were not on the, on the site, which is where they should have been, uh, at the facility.
So to qualify that, Chief, the animals that were removed that had owners were dog bite quarantines?
Yes.
And that was your interest? That's how you knew about them?
Yes.
So the statement, all animals were removed, even those with owners, isn't quite the whole story. It would be even those animals who were in dog bite quarantine as mandated by the Selma PD. Is that a, is that a more complete description?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. So all the animals were, were removed. Some maybe owners, some, uh, we're not sure because we don't have the data that we've been requesting from Second Chance Animal Shelter.
It's just the way it's phrased is like they were removed, some were adopted, were they not? Some went to rescue, were they not?
Again, Mr. Mayor, it's difficult to answer that question because we don't have the data from Second Chance Animal Shelter.
You see my point though, right? Removed is like a verb that had, implies that someone took them out. But it doesn't really state again, the full story, which is some of the animals were adopted and some of the animals went to rescue. And, you know, they weren't just removed. Correct?
If I may, I mean, the, the wording is accurate because if the chief says, we don't know whether they were adopted, whether they were fostered out, that what we know is that they were no longer on site, thus they were removed. So we couldn't be more specific about what the circumstances of the removal was.
Okay. So then you could have said all animals were removed by, you could have implied some agency and said by adopters, by rescues, by the shelter.
It, it, it might have been best to put, we're not on site and we're unaware of where their, where their, uh, location. I, I, I don't know, Mr. Mayor.
But to your knowledge, none of the animals were destroyed or mistreated or harmed by the previous tenant. Is that correct or put down?
Mayor, we don't have that information to answer that question. We don't know what happened to the animals because none of that information has been provided.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then did I, did I, um, did the city assist the second chance who'd served the city for 10 years with helping them to move and help them clean up and clean up and get, get out of there by that mandated time of December 31st? Did the city go out and assist them?
So I, I volunteered my time on a Saturday myself, my con and Anthony Rivas cleaning the facilities, the, uh, the play area, trimming some shrubs, picking up trash. But as a city employee, no, I volunteered my time.
So the city itself didn't go out there and help the shelter to vacate the premises so the city could occupy? It was individuals that helped second chance to vacate the premises. Is that correct?
So the city did not help? No.
Okay. So I mean, you know, when you see pictures of pre before the city came in with all the city's resources, it was because you had a nonprofit that was composed of individuals like a lot of us who are just, you know, weekend warriors trying to help city clear out. So maybe it's not extremely fair presentation that it didn't look so great because they were just moving out. I believe they were trying to meet a deadline that the city imposed. Is that correct of December 31st?
No, that's just when the contract expired.
When were they asked to? Well, is that not the same as when they were?
The city didn't impose, uh, the, the contract, which second chance entered into with the city expired December 31st. So they were fully aware, um, throughout the duration of the contract that that was there, um, when the contract ended.
Um, from what I understand, it was, it was a pretty tight timeline though. They were going to get an extra three months or something. And my point is they had an abbreviated timeline. They had, they had to get out. They had to, they had to get out pretty quickly.
You, you know, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I would say is the, the, the condition of the facility didn't happen in 30 days or 60 days or six months. That, those are years of neglect. Um, running a program like this is extremely difficult. There's no doubt about that. And finding people that have the passion and the expertise to be able to balance those worlds between rescue and shelter are, they're few and far between. Um, in doing our research, I've met with numerous rescues and unfortunately the world that we live in today is, is extremely difficult. Uh, rescues as shelters having to make difficult decisions to keep a population that is sustainable, not only for today, but to be able to serve, you know, animals in the future. Cause you just never know, you know, how many animals will come in from day to day. So you really always have to kind of have, uh, the ability to accept those animals and, and we understand it's difficult. There's, there's, you know, there's no denying that. But part of being leader, uh, leadership and, and running an organization, having to make difficult decisions and, and, and think kind of futuristic, if you will. So I, you know, our main focus, Terry's here and her stat and her, and our, and our new members are here to move us forward. And really that's the direction that we'd like to go into. Um, all we're showing is, you know, the council and some of our community members asked for an assessment. It would have been impossible to do an assessment prior to January 1st. We've gotten an assessment in 60 days considering the out, the, uh, the outreaches that we've done, the time to clean the facility and get it up to a standard that, that when we brought animals in, that they would be healthy and stay healthy so that we could get them back out to, uh, either their owners or get them out for adoption or get them out to rescues, right? We want to, want to present these animals to these rescues with the hopes that they're going to get homed, uh, or they'll be homed and, and be cared for like they should be. Um, I, I really don't want to, I heard a finger point. The, 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 the assessment is what the assessment is. Um, but what our staff's been doing for the last 60 days is, and, and is cleaning that and getting it to, uh, uh, and, and an operational standard that, that our animals and our community members deserve. And that, that's all.
Really appreciate that. I think they're doing a phenomenal job. The, the, just, just to add a little perspective to tonight, the shelter did start in 2013. Those Those buildings that you're looking at, the one building, the big one, was, uh, built without any, um, taxpayer funds being spent. It was built on donations, great people from the community, several of whom are, are here tonight, who at that time were supporters of our volunteer-run shelter. Um, and Juanita Smith, who passed away and left twenty-five thousand dollars, the city for the new shelter only, to be spent on that. A lot of good people provided the foundation for this shelter and we should honor those good people who provided that foundation and we should honor these people who are carrying on the mission and doing it in a very professional way. I understand that there are a lot of city funds, massive city funds going into the shelter now. We did not have the luxury of that as community volunteers when we were involved with the shelter. The city has that now and I'm excited about the professionalism and about the shelter going forward. And I really hope the city can move forward and the community, and while at the same time honoring those citizens who did this um, and were very cost-conscious when we did start the shelter and saved over eight, nine thousand animals. Cause it was a, a real labor of love and it looks like it continues to be so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you have any, any other questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, she mentioned there is what, fifty-five microchip?
I, I believe, I believe that's what we microchipped on Saturday the sixteenth, yes, ma'am.
Okay, just, how many of those dogs were Selma residents' dogs?
All, all of them, so when we bring in, um, we're asking for identification or, or a utility bill to show that you live inside the city's jurisdiction.
Okay, so they were all Selma residents?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect.
I have a couple of questions. So we are running, we are running data as we speak. That'll be, the data will be from January first to present. Uh, and you're doing it monthly, the reporting is coming out monthly? And it's going through Facebook, it's not going through, or you're directing it to city staff also?
Uh, Councilmember Trier, we get that and then that information is put out on Facebook as well as also giving a report to, to the council. We're gonna try and clean up the reports so it's a little easier to read, much more visually aesthetic, right? Not reading a bunch of narrative, we can hit the points.
That was gonna be my question, was that we'll, we'll be getting a report on a monthly basis, the city council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you are also expanding that to the cats also, the spayed and neutered also?
Ye- yes, sir, and, and legislation has changed a, a little bit with regards to cats, is, is that correct, Terry? Addressing felines? Yeah, I, ma- maybe I misspoke, I apologize, I'm not, I'm not as, uh, up to speed. Uh, but, uh, yeah, so the, the pat, the cats as well. Um, we're, we're, we've held two spay and neutering events for, for, um, cats. I think we were able to fit one dog in.
Yeah, I, I wanna, you know, that's one of the questions, the other one is, uh, it's not a question, it's actually just a statement in regards to, you know, uh, you know, what was then and what's now. I'm, I'm more, you know, being an elected official for our community is, you know, what are we doing to make sure we, 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 we justify and make sure our path is even better? And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm in the same path that you, you spoke of earlier, is, you know, let's not dwell about what's happened in the past. Let the legal ramifications follow, but let's just start getting this on the path and we get the community involved and, and, uh, start moving it forward where we can get a good, uh, you know, Selma, you know, there's, there's lots of people that, you know, at the end of the day, they really just want to help. And, you know, either, either stroking this side or that side, but at the end of the day, they wanna make sure that, you know, their, their, their community looks beautiful and it's being, it's being proactive. So on that part, you know, I, I commend you guys for all the hard work from January first. And I, uh, I'm, I'm hoping and expecting to see more. And, uh, from that, I thank you, Chief, really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is regarding cats. Cause I get this call regarding, people are saying that there's still tons of cats in the alley by the post office and then also by McDonald's. Are they doing anything to try to catch those cats?
So I, I think, I, I'll let Terry speak to that, I think the TNR, did I say that correctly?
You did.
Okay, I got something right.
He, he gets more than he thinks, right? So there are a few things that we're gonna focus on. Uh, why we started this bayneuter product, project with cats is because, as obviously as some of you know, the spring is the time to get that, get ahead of that. I think the next thing is looking at, uh, securing some funding and then securing some ability to actually target some of these areas. Um, handful of people have come in and basically given us locations just in like hearsay. What also is, is, is a bit difficult is when you don't have any historical data, again, we're creating our own. So targeting these areas of issues, bites, cat problems, um, running at large type of things will just come and then we'll have to react to that. So it's a long way of saying yes, but we're gonna have to get some data so that we can actually target this stuff and also do it efficiently so that, again, we are funded, um, so that we can actually get it, meet the people who can help us and also pay for it. But we, but, but it's, it's, uh, it's important because if we don't, obviously they're gonna explode. And, and just driving around, lot of cats, lot of cats live in Selma.
So, what does it cost to spay or neuter a cat? I don't know what, what.
Really depends, I mean, right now, we have a really, really, um, we have a, a shortage of veterinarians and veterinary staff. And so, um, what, what has happened in the past, I don't know, five years or so is, is the, the, the ability to get things fixed as, has shrunken and the price has increased. Um, thankfully, some of my peeps have some, uh, excellent relationships. So right now, we're partnering with Tulare County and we're working on about a thirty-five to forty-five dollar fee for cats. Now that is because the relationship has had, we've had it for about ten, fifteen years. Um, private practice veterinarians are exceedingly expensive. And so that's also, uh, difficulty when we, we look at people complying with spay neuter, right? Because, you know, there, there's a finite amount of money in people's pocketbooks and so.
So if, if a business wanted to donate to the Selma Animal Shelter in order to do the spay and neuter for cats, would they go to your office or would they go to the city hall or how does it work?
So they would initially start with us and then I would go to these guys and we would figure out how to create, and we, a lot of talks about how we would create some foundations and things so that we can get donations from folks that are like-minded. Um, and then would like to earmark some of that, that, so yes, definitely, it's just about having to figure out a municipal process to do that correctly.
Okay, thank you.
And what are the adoption fees, Director Rockel?
Right now, the adoption fees are waived.
So the city's paying the, the adoption fees, they're subsidizing the adoption fees at this time?
They're subsidizing the adoption fees, the, um, the fee schedule, um, will need to be addressed and then, and then.
That, Mr. Mayor, that, that's part of the process is, you know, readdressing the, the cert, the, uh, fee schedule, some of our ordinances as well to streamline operations and, um, kind of, what's the word? Modernize, if you will, get it up to date. Uh, because as you all know, a lot of our ordinances are quite, quite old and, and need some readdressing. And that's just part of any, any problem that you come across, right? You start peeling back the onion, figuring out, we gotta streamline these, we need to update this, uh, or that. But, uh, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you for that. And then, um, what is the live release rate these days to qualify as a no-kill shelter?
Ten percent.
And the city, in terms of the first two months, has the city meeting that, met that threshold?
Yes.
Okay, will that be a, um, a data, a piece of data that the city council will be provided with?
If I may interject.
On a monthly basis?
Um, Mayor, there's no directive or requirement, um, you know, for the shelter to be a no-kill shelter, as you know. Um, obviously, we do everything possible to keep that number down, which we're doing successfully. Um, if the council wishes to receive that information, we can certainly provide it. But, um, you know, there was never, um, an expectation that, you know, we would, we would stay under that number. Uh, and we, there's no reason to believe that it would not stay under that number. But I just wanna make clear that there's no legal requirement for that.
Good. So if we wanted to make that a criterion, we could bring it up as an agenda item to make that a criterion and then the council could vote on that. And if the majority of the council voted to make the live release rate a criterion, that would be included in the monthly reports, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, if we have no other input, we will now move on.
Can I, can I say something, sorry?
Sure.
Um.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro, did you wanna weigh in at this point?
Yes, please, um, I just wanted to say thank you to Terry and her staff. I know that we had a conversation when, um, they did the open house, um, event, I think it was in February or something like that. And it, it looks really, really good and I just, um, I just wanna commend you and your team for, you know, bringing the, the city, um, animal service to, you know, the next level. I know we could sit here and circle back and what, what we didn't do and what we did do, what have you on the old, um, with the old provider. However, what we want is we wanna move forward, you know, and a positive. And I like to drive by there, um, you know, and especially at night, and I like to see it open because it does really look inviting. And so I just like to see, um, just the openness and the welcoming of that, that facility. The other thing I love to see is I love to see the posts that are done on Facebook and, um, especially the highlights with the staff. And so you guys are doing a really good job and I look forward to, um, you know, I know that, that you have a vision cause like I said, we did talk at the, at the open house. And so I just, um, commend you and your team for, you know, doing a really good job, thank you.
See. With that, we're going to move on, but first, we're gonna take a five-minute break and come back at seven thirty-five. All right, with that, we will resume our public meeting and our next item is item three, which is two, consideration of state and federal budget appropriations and legislative funding priorities for the city of Selma for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, this item is, uh, fairly routine as the council has previously identified its priorities for, um, state and federal budget earmark requests. Um, they're effectively the same as they were last year, um, with us requesting from the state, um, a, uh, about a three million dollar earmark for Pioneer Village, uh, to pay for improvements, uh, including a parking lot and a potential event center to support, uh, community events. And then five million dollars, um, in downtown revitalization funds to help us, um, with our efforts, uh, in downtown Selma. And then on the federal side, uh, we'll, we'll be meeting with, um, Congressman Costa to discuss, uh, potential earmarks for infrastructure, um, uh, in the neighborhood of five million dollars, which would go towards sewer water and storm drainage and streets and, and potentially broadband. And then, um, certainly, um, to help traffic and circulation improvements, um, along floral and, and other thoroughfares in the city, um, in the neighborhood of ten million dollars. And we don't anticipate, um, receiving the full amounts that we request, especially on the, on the state budget side, simply because we, uh, as the council may be aware, the state is projecting a significant deficit, but, but it does not mean that there is, uh, no possibility of, um, receiving an earmark, it's just a matter of how much. Um, and certainly not every community that, that asks for an earmark receives it. So we'll be, we're hopeful, we had, um, uh, Assemblyman, uh, Dr. Joaquin Arambula, um, visit Selma last week and tour Pioneer Village, so we'll be making a formal request to him. And then we are coordinating, uh, a meeting with Congressman Costa here in the coming weeks. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for city manager? Do we have any comments from the public tonight on the budget asks? That will, anybody online or on the phone?
I have no comments.
Go ahead, council member.
No, I said I have no comments.
Oh, okay, thank you. With that, we'll bring the matter back, I know it was good meeting with Mayor Protemin, with, um, State Senator Caballero. Um, she's interested in helping our city as well deliver on, um, various much-needed budget items, thank you for that. And with that, we'll move on to item four, which is. And with that, we'll move on to item four, which is a discussion of storm drain, infrastructure, maintenance and updates.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, tonight I'm going to report back on what I had began to discuss in my last department update at the last council meeting. Um, this is in regards to an emergency storm drain repair located on Golden State Boulevard, just uh, south of Mountain View in the city of Kingsburg. On Wednesday, February twenty-first, I was notified that uh, by the Public Works Director of Kingsburg that we had a situation that I needed to address on Golden State Boulevard. Uh, I met the Public Works Director, Director at the location, which was approximately a half a mile south of Mountain View on the west side of Golden State Boulevard, next to the pedestrian bike trail. Um, there was a sinkhole that was there that was approximately thirteen and a half feet deep, fifteen feet across and about twenty feet wide. Um, this sinkhole uh, was determined to be caused by the severe rain events that we had been experiencing and by a compromised storm drain line that we have running in that vicinity. The storm drain line is a thirty-six inch concrete pipe um, that is not reinforced from the best that we can find of records. That was installed in nineteen sixty-three. That line runs all the way down the east side of Union Pacific Railroad tracks to the intersection of Mountain View where it is bored under the railroad tracks, crosses Golden State Boulevard and continues up the west side of Golden State Boulevard. Underneath the freeway ninety-nine, approximately a mile to the south of Golden State Boulevard and continues out to the pond at S K F. When we went out to the sinkhole and located what the issue was, um, what had caused the issue, um, we made contact with a local contractor Floyd Johnston Construction out of Clovis, California, who also just completed our Nebraska sewer project, but is very uh, adept with doing storm drain, concrete pipe repairs. So they met with me onsite on the twenty-second, on Thursday, the twenty-second to discuss mobilizing and what we were going to do as far as fixing this piece of pipe and getting it back into service. As you can see from the slide that's shown right here, the mobilization happened on the twenty-seventh, which was a Monday, twenty-eighth was when they actually began work. Next slide, please. So what you're looking at here, council members and Mr. Mayor, is once we actually excavated down to the location where the pipe was compromised, um, this was the hole that was basically slope back to meet OSHA requirements so that we could get in and remove the compromised piece of pipe and make the repair. The original uh, repair was just going to be an eight foot, uh, eight foot stick of uh, concrete pipe. Um, but if we go to the next slide, um, if you can look at the picture to the right, um, you can actually see where we have the contractors attempted to cut the pipe and make a clean cut for a joint to where they could adjoin the new pipe. Um, but the bottom of the pipe is completely broken, compromised and shattered. Um, so with that, we had to go an additional four feet. So we actually repaired a total of twelve feet of that line. Next slide, please. If you look at the picture to the far right, you can see a kind of a triangle shaped hole where some roots are growing in. Um, that is actually located directly below where the sinkhole uh, was created. Um, we feel that the debris that you see inside that line right now is a cause, it was caused from the rain events and the compromised section of pipe that you're looking at, and the water eventually found its way to the opening in the pipe, which created somewhat of a vacuum and allowed the material to continue to sift into the pipe and created that sinkhole. Um, the debris that you see on the other two pictures is basically on both sides of that hole. Um, it's just to show you basically the amount of material that was uh, let into that line where it was compromised. The other thing I want to make note of is the cracks that you see on the top of those pipes right there. This is a couple of pictures just to depict those cracks, but we have identified those cracks uh, that actually go longitudinally along the top of the pipe for a total of eight hundred and sixty feet going to the north. So, long story short, and we'll look at the other slides in a moment, but long story short, uh, council members, is we have a section of storm drain line that needs to be addressed immediately. Um, we have done a repair. It's a good repair in the location that we have the sinkhole. But this is going to be a continuing issue on this section of line as we continue to get rain. Um, I've been out there and walked this line with uh, people from uh, the city, city staff and also with the, the city manager. And we've identified places on the property that this line has the storm drain easement running through that are starting to sink. Um, so I'm assumed, it's an assumption, but from the cracks that are there and from my experience, those sinkholes are the beginning of another large sinkhole. Um, so this is something that we need to have future talks about how we're going to work on getting this line fixed. Um, I'm also working with the Assistant City Manager to identify off of our master plan from two thousand fifteen locations that have already been uh, sort of specked out for future development and pawn for retention um, to where we could possibly try to intercept this line before we get to Mountain View and divert it to a pond and eliminate the line that continues through Kingsburg to S K F. Um, real quickly, I've also had calls with the Director Daniel from Kingsburg. Kingsburg might possibly be interested in procuring this line from us. So there's a lot of stuff that's kind of in the works right now. We're not sure where that's going to fall, but um, we will keep you posted on that. Next slide, please. So there you can see the final repair. You can see the full stick of pipe on the picture to the left is the, the piece of pipe with the bell on it that is the full stick. And then you can see the additional four feet that we had to add. Um, you can see the guys down in there pouring the collars. Um, uh, again, this pipe is not reinforced. It was put in nineteen sixty-three. We're assuming that it was called uh, uh, a operation called cast in place where you actually have still forms that sit down in the ditch and a concrete machine that runs over the still forms and casts the pipe in place, but there is no reinforcement in that, in that pipe. So uh, pipe has definitely outlived its life expectancy. Next slide, please. So um, if you can see the, the fence where the gentleman's standing on the uh, left side there, that entire fence was taken down by Floyd Johnston uh, with the uh, approval and the uh, okay from the property owners there because even though it's a drainage uh, right away, it, it is on their property. Um, everything was put back into place just as it was before we started. And what you see right there is actually they had uh, compacted and they were getting ready to do the paving on the pedestrian bike lane that ran next to that section of pipe. Pictures off to the, the center and the right are just uh, pictures showing them doing the backfilling compaction after the pipe had been replaced. Next picture.
G and L. Yeah. That's G and L storage, right, Director?
Uh, yes, it is. Yes. And this is actually the final product. You can see the fence was all put back in place. Um, the paving was done and the project was completed. Um, so that was uh, the end of that project. Next slide. I, I did add a couple of slides here, uh, council members and mayor. This is, I wanted to give you guys a real quick uh, look, uh, look at what we're dealing with, with the Vector truck right now. So this is actually a call that I got from our Leroux, who is our project manager for the county on the Golden State Boulevard project. It's about two weeks ago. He has a property on the corner of Highland and Witten that is a uh, truck transfer place where they transfer semi-trailers. The property owner was upset because they had a large rain and it flooded out their parking lot. So with that being said, we made arrangements to take the Vector truck that we're renting now out to that location. And we started rotting that line out. This line actually drains onto the Union Pacific right away. The picture to the far right, you can barely see is actually a concrete head wall. And you can barely see the top opening of the pipe. That is all the debris that's in front of that pipe where it drains out. We actually took three loader buckets with our big tractor loader to dig out the front of that. We started rotting the pipe out with the picture, what you see on the right, that's what we started with. And when we finished, it's the picture in the center there. As you can see, that C M P pipe, corrugated metal pipe, it's also pretty much lived out its life expectancy. The bottom's rusting out on the pipe. This is something that I'm working with David Horn and Yamavian Horn uh, on a C I P replacement program where we will be going around addressing corrugated metal pipe around the city as well. But if you look at the top right there, you see that dent where it sunk in, that is actually in the roadway. So some of the bumps and, and, and uh, dips that you see in the road, a lot of it could be part of our uh, storm drain infrastructure. Um, so I just wanted to show you that and give you a quick little insight of kind of what we're dealing with right now. And that completes my presentation.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Any comments from city council?
No, um, I mean, it's a pretty sad presentation, to say the least. I mean, unfortunately, it's something that has to be brought to our attention, definitely. Um, and we definitely need to look at this and bring this to, to the budget, you know? And see what we're going to have to do to get this um, repaired and what it's going to cost. Um, hopefully that we can, you know, find some grant money that we talked about and help with this. But I mean, just by your presentation, Mr. Han, it's a necessity and it's an urgent necessity. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And if it doesn't get fixed right away, what are we looking at? Sinkholes?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I mean, we're going to have continued failure of this infrastructure. Um, it, this is something that needs to be maintained on an annual basis. Um, from what I understand, that's, there's been a lack of maintenance on, on our infrastructure for storm drain, not due to any of the current staff that's here, but that's just the way it's unfolded. So we are currently trying to get up to speed and get everything cleaned out, not only so that we can identify, so that we can have clear passage for our stormwater because we've had these huge rain, rain events, but also to identify areas that have been compromised. I can tell you this is, I'm going to present, as I said a couple of meetings ago, once we're done cleaning all the lines, I will have a big presentation for you. We have, we have identified many storm drain lines in the city that are compromised. We even have identified a couple of locations where we have what is called a crossboard. That's where someone has come in and drilled through the street and they've drilled right through our storm drain pipe and there's infrastructure now that's through our storm drain pipe. So there are multiple issues that we're dealing with and there are a lot of them. So yes, it's absolutely mandated that we address this. And I think that it's something that David Horn, myself and staff continue creating a maintenance schedule for us to maintain for the years to come.
So when you mentioned that it's been drilled through or projects have gone, are you talking about Selma projects? Are we talking about Kingsburg projects or both?
So the project in particular that I'm speaking of is off of McCall and Aspen, and it was identified through our CCTV cameraing that we did, city staff did to look at what our storm drain lines look like. This is a telecommunications line that I can tell you that I've gone back through Google Earth and in two thousand and nineteen, it was the patch for this project was not in the road. After two thousand nineteen, it is there. Gone back and looked at historical data, was there a permit pulled? What's going on? Can't really find nothing on that project. So this is a telecommunications subcontractor that's come in and has installed a new phone service for a resident that did not identify our storm drain, but rather drilled right through it. So we actually have a, it is called a inner duct or a fiber conduit that runs through our storm drain, concrete pipe that has uh, more than likely fiber in it to service that residence.
Thank you.
So, um, first of all, thank you because that's kind of what, where we're at, right? That's where uh, you know, just as you stated, you know, it's not the staff, it's, it's what's happened in the past. But what's happened in the past, we didn't have enough staff and we didn't have the people we have now. So I would, I would more agree to that the uh, that the department heads gather together and start getting a lot of more analyze and bring us some, some cost and further along uh, create a ten-year C I P that will actually fit into this process. Because that's what we're really going to earn or, you know, more bang to our buck, right? And so, so, but, but I'm happy that you guys are having this dialogue. I'm happy that you guys are out there actually looking at what's going on because the infrastructure is the number one. It's number one, right? And uh, uh, infrastructure, but our, our collaboration with eight, other agencies that are being hindered with this, right? S K F and everybody else, right?
Yes, sir.
So those all play a really important role as you gather this information. So what I ask you to do is keep on doing it and just make sure you bring a good presentation and be prepared to answer a lot of questions because that's where it's going to go. But with the understanding that this should be a ten to twenty year project through a C I P. But we look and we organize and find out where the most crucial points are from the beginning to what year and, and then get outside agencies, bring in, you know, what we can get from the state, what we can get from the federal and, you know, what are other agencies, what are other collaborations we can do with S K F and things like that?
Yes, sir. I can tell you that this is in the center of the radar for the city manager and the Assistant City Manager.
Just a question, to what degree of the um, recent rainfalls, pretty extreme rainfalls of the last couple of years accelerated this process, Director?
That's a tough question to answer, Mr. Mayor. Um, we can, you, you have to think about it in the, in the sense of physics. I mean, we, water is going to find, use gravity to find the path of least resistance because we have such a huge compromised section of pipe. That is just where the water has found its way through our permeable uh, material that we live in here in this farming community and has found its way to that section of pipe. How long that process has taken? I would say probably several years, but it's a guess. Um, I don't have all of the data to know how long we've had the pipe compromised the way that it is. Um, so I'm just going to say that from two thousand twenty-one till our present time, I would say that the amount of rain that we have received in the Central Valley is the contributor to that.
So we would, if we wouldn't have had this extreme weather, we would have gone a lot more, a lot more time.
We might have, Mr. Mayor. Then again, you know, we're just waiting for that catastrophic event to happen. The good thing about this, um, council members and Mr. Mayor, is that to the, to the likeness of those pictures, that sinkhole was literally right on the edge of the pedestrian bike path. Um, so it happened when it happened and it was identified and no one got hurt, thank God, but it literally could have been an event where that whole thing went at one time and somebody could have been riding their bicycle past there. So liability is, yeah, it's huge. So again, I can't, yeah, pray. And I can't answer uh, with an educated answer as to exactly when or how that took place.
Uh, Director Han, um, I think you and I discussed that there, there might be some uh, CCTV footage of that section of pipe, right? And, and when was that footage taken and, and what do you know about what action was taken at that time?
Okay, so I will go back to that. Um, from what I understood, um, from staff, current staff that was here at the time, the mini storage in the industrial park was flooded about four or five years ago. And there was a claim against the city for the damage to the mini storage in the industrial park. When that event took place, Jesus Hernandez, who's on my staff, was told to bring in a third party CCTV camera and try to figure out where does that pipe go? Really understood where that line even ran. Um, a lot of people, I can tell you, uh, until the CCTV footage was done, no one knew that it ran all the way to S K F's pond. Um, that was uh, that was a like, wow, okay, so we have this pipe now. Um, but in that CCTV footage, um, it was identified that that line was compromised. The pictures that you saw were pictures taken on that CCTV video four and a half, five years ago. When that video was taken, my staff came to the current, who was current city manager or director at that time. It was all explained to him. The, the video footage was reviewed and that's where the story stops. What happened to it, sir? I can't answer that question, but I do know it was identified, including the eight hundred and sixty-four foot long lateral crack on the top. It was brought to staff and here we are.
I know the city, city of Selma may not have what their lack, with having not been here that long, but S K F, I'm, from what I hear, did know that that, that storm drain.
But S K F, I'm, from what I hear, did know that that, that storm drain went to the Cam Avenue ponds. And in fact, I think there's an agreement in effect between S K F and the city of Selma. For S K F to till that pond, to make sure that the water going in and the vegetation it causes to grow. Gets tilt, gets cut by, by the S K F at their expense. And this was an agreement that, that goes back pretty far between the city of Selma and the S K F. So I think that argues for a good communicative relationship, good communication between S K F and the city of Selma. Cause they could have, you know, they, they knew, they knew that this water was going through there. And they knew it for, for a long time. So I think that's important information that our agencies do get together and talk with each other. So it's a good, it's a good reason for that to happen as well.
I agree completely, Mr. Mayor. And I can also tell you that S K F would love nothing more right now than to have that pond back for their own usage. And I know that when you are letting storm drain water into a pond, that eliminates you being able to use it for, for sewage purposes. For the reponding of that water. So I know that they would love nothing more to have that pipe eliminated from that pond. So that they could actually have full use of their facility.
Fortunately, they're only at fifty-two percent capacity right now, so it's not a hugely pressing need. Quick question, are there any right away issues with repairing sinkholes under railroad property?
Under railroad property?
Say one of the, one of the storm drain goes under the tracks?
So yes, sir, it does, Mr. Mayor. Just north of Mountain View, the line turns ninety degrees to the west. And comes under the well, under the railroad tracks and under Golden State Boulevard. And then continues up the west side of Golden State Boulevard. But we also have an area where we have a bore under the ninety-nine freeway. That's also part of that line, so yes, it's, it's going to be quite the undertaking, but we're working on it.
It's likely that line was installed prior to the freeway, is that correct?
So I, we've looked back historically and it looks like the ninety-nine freeway was actually started before sixty-three. So the line, from what we've confined in plans that David Horn's been able to find, it looks like sixty-three is when that went in. What our hopes is, what my hope is, when we get to that point, if, if and when we do abandon it. If it's not granted to Kingsburg for their usage, once we get it poned on our side of the tracks. That's going to be something that we're going to look at really closely. We're hoping that that line under the ninety-nine freeway is actually in a still casing. Because when we go to abandon that, if that's what we have to do, that could, that could.
Abandon it, close it up and then put a new one in?
I am working very hard on this with the assistant city manager and the other agencies involved. And we will come to a resolution on this and we will bring it to you.
Thank you. And this is not an action item, it's an information item. So with that, we will, thank you Director Hahn, appreciate your presentation. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is future agenda items. This is a council request for future agenda items. This is not subject to public comment. Items require consensus. Does anyone have any future agenda items they would like to put before the council now?
Yes, I'd like to get an update on our projects, on all the projects, please.
Councilmember Gera, that's part of Community Development's quarterly project report. And I believe the next meeting will be when we present that.
Okay, will we get our spreadsheet? That's what I'm talking about, the actual spreadsheet.
We, we don't, as of maybe six months ago, maybe a year ago, we, we've stopped using that spreadsheet. And we've presented the PowerPoint that has the status tracker of each project, if you recall. The spreadsheet was just too inefficient to keep track of, but it's effectively much more informative to have the PowerPoint that Community Development provides.
Okay, as long as we get it in advance, I'm good with that.
Okay.
But, but that status tracker tells us what permits are pulled, what stage they are in the, in the project, correct? Is that what, that's the one we're talking about?
Correct, for each development project, because they have a different development process. We, we customize the tracker to correspond with what their permitting is.
But if I recall, when we had that discussion, you had told us that only part of the system was working. Are we fully, are we fully turned on and we have, where they have the capabilities of seeing where what, where, where our project is at? What's stalling it and, you know?
I, I, we may be talking about two different things. I think one is OpenGov, which talks about applicants being able to track their own permits. So if they submit, they can see where their project is with the development. With the development update, quarterly update, we have the tracker embedded in the presentation. So that comparatively speaking, if you look at the last presentation, you can see what progress has been made to, to the project over the quarter.
And just to make, just to make sure, you know, go along with what Councilwoman Gera's stating. Will we get in regards to that tracker? If X amount developers asked for this and they're not providing it? Or if the development is at this stage, what's holding up? You'll be able to explain that to us?
We can discuss where the projects are at, what, you know, is, is holding. I don't know if it's holding up, but where, where the project is, what's outstanding and what's needed to move it forward. We can talk about those items. We've had meetings with, with various applicants and provided detail regarding their process and so that they could understand. Because in a lot of instances, they rely on consultants. We've provided information to them about how long the city's been processing it versus how long their consultants have been processing revisions. And had them side by side to show how long it's taken their project to go. So we've, we've done that on a case by case basis. If there's requests for follow-up information, we can provide those on a project by project basis after the development presentation. If that's the.
Well, the reason we're asking, I mean, Jerome, you got to understand, it's, it's frustrating. You know, we're business friendly and I don't like to hear development that we're holding up any kind of projects, especially when it comes to housing. Because we're in such a huge need of getting our housing development going, you know, shovel ready. Because we keep hearing that, you know, we're going to be shovel ready and shovel ready has been, you know, I hate to tell you, but five years ready. And I made that comment, what is it going to take, another five years? No, we're losing people and I don't want to hear that. I, I mean, that's not what I'm here for, you know? I'm, I'm, I may request it, maybe it's a nuisance that I asked for a spreadsheet, but that's what kept us informed. You know, they pulled permits. This is when they're going to, you know, finish, or this is when they get their certificate of occupancy. You know, those are, that's important, you know, because that's information that we can share with the public. Because we get that, we get asked that all the time, while I do, anyway. So those are things that, you know, I, I'm going to keep asking. And the other thing is, you know, they made comments about the fees. I've heard that numerous times. So can we get a comparison as what our surrounding cities are, are charging on their fees? And what Selma fees are, so we can take a look at it?
Councilmember Gera, so you're asking for a, a review of development fees?
Of all the fees that they're complaining about, how come we're much higher than our surrounding cities?
I'm sorry, could you clarify who's, who is they?
We just heard two developers today.
So my understanding is that, and you're referring to Mr. Sahoda. So they're all represented by the same engineering company, Mr. Sahoda's. And so we're in contact with him with regard to what the fees are. My understanding is Mr. Sahoda has provided his own sort of analysis of comparing city of Selma with city of Dinuba and Kingsburg and, and city of Fresno. But I think if where you're going is a review of just fees in general. About where, where we stand relative to other communities, we can do that. Or if you're looking at a more specific project oriented fee review. Specific to the complaint or the, the comments we received tonight.
Let's do the development. I'd like an update on the development on all our projects and then we can do a fee analysis.
Just in general, right?
Yes.
For clarification staff, is that just the development impact fees? Which I believe they were referring to are all associated development fees such as building permit fees?
Building permit fees, everything.
Yeah, anything that goes into the development process. As you might understand, that, that's going to be a fairly lengthy analysis, not something that we could probably turn around within, you know, by the next meeting. But we're, we'll start working on, on something like that. Actually, we were, we were going to bring a review of the fees with a budget. And if that's, if that's still a timeline that works for the council, I mean, we can continue on that course. Cause that's originally when we were planning on doing that.
So that's sometime like?
Yeah, around, around May, yeah.
I'm sorry, there's, there's two studies we're talking about, right?
No, just one.
Just the one on all fees?
Development fees.
Cause we're doing, we're currently under contract to review development impact fees, which staff is undergoing following completion of the capital improvement program. Where most of those projects will be rolled into that program. In regard to other development fees such as permit fees and inspection fees and, and processing fees of applications, that's a separate item.
I, I think it's part of the same conversation. So when we review the development impact fee study update, we'll talk about the entire development process and how those fees fit into that. With the additional fees also included in that analysis. I have a related topic. So I get a lot of contact as mayor of Selma from the people. And some of them are developers. And so what I'd like to look at having as an agenda item, where we come up with a framework. In which a council member or two council members, not to violate the Brown Act. Could represent the members of the public, which is who I represent, the people, Selma, including the developers. To the city staff. Sometimes there are some communication issues there, sometimes they have clarification issues. I'd like to come up with a framework of rules to make sure everybody's comfortable. Where the developers, the city council representatives and staff to get together for a productive, polite and businesslike discussion. Could we have that as an agenda item so that there's a framework for when these developers come to me? And say, or any council member for that matter, I'd like to meet with, you know, your, your city manager. Or your city manager and your deputy city manager, your public works director, fire chief. You know, just where we can get the ball rolling in a productive, we have a format to get the ball rolling in. Rather than just an email of, you know, this person would like to meet. I'd like a format for that with a timeline so that, right? A timeline so that I can make the request or the council member who gets contacted can make the request. And then get a response within a certain amount of time. So that the developer can know about when that meeting could happen, if it's acceptable to all parties. So right now, it's just sort of a catch as catch can, do you have time? Can you meet with so-and-so, they have an issue? I'd like a process and a format, any framework for a mutually productive meeting with the developer, developers of our city who, who do this stuff. And our staff who do this stuff and our city council members who represent the, the, the public. So could we put that on as an agenda item to come up with a format for a request for a meeting? Between the city administration, whoever you choose, and the developers with us in attendance to discuss developer issues?
Yeah, I mean, obviously it's up to the council and we would still have to get consensus about Councilmember Gera's request to place the item on the agenda. But with regard to your request, Mayor Robertson, I think what you're asking is if a developer wants to meet with staff, with a council member or yourself present. What is the process by which we coordinate that meeting? And, you know, that can be tricky because, you know, often what we find is when, and this doesn't happen with every developer that wants a meeting. With a council representative there, you know, they're asking for things from the staff. That we cannot necessarily do because, you know, we're bound by the municipal code or other policies. And so there's nothing that prevents us from having a conversation, obviously. But then it puts the council representative in a, in a situation and the staff in a situation where they might feel like they're getting pressured to maybe waive. And we've seen this in the past, to, to waive certain requirements, to, you know, treat one developer differently from another. Simply because they might have a relationship with one particular member of the council. And so I would caution that, but at the end of the day, you know, the, the staff is always willing to meet with developers. To talk about their specific projects, as long as those conversations are productive, they're respectful, et cetera. But there's, there's never been an issue that I'm aware of where staff hasn't been able to meet with a project developer and resolve issues. Certainly there's issues with projects specifically, you know, like environmental issues and, and those kinds of things. But I, I would leave it to the council to, to have a consensus on, on whether we should even start looking at that kind of process. Especially now as we're kind of instituting a new process to streamline development in general. And those kinds of meetings can, can often sort of derail those efforts. So that, those are my two cents, but ultimately I think we would need consensus on both of those requests.
Yeah, and I want to jump in here just real quickly. I would also caution council from meeting with developers on projects that are still going to be coming before council. Just because ultimately any discussions about those projects should be had here in an open session. I understand if there's less than two councilmen, or two or less council members, you're not necessarily violating the Brown Act on that. But ultimately, any, any information you gain and your decision-making process should happen here in front of the public. And so that's where it gets a little tricky when you talk about meeting with developers specifically related to projects that are going to come before you guys or have came before you guys.
Okay, so you're giving the parameters, that's what you're giving, that's exactly what I'm looking for. Parameters of not discussing future projects, parameters of not discussing waiving, waiving fees. And yet you give some of these folks a chance to express themselves, maybe having two council members instead of one, kind of like a counter signature requirement. I mean, they're, they're just, from what I've gathered, yes, the developers can meet with the city. But the city, city staff is very, very busy. And sometimes it's good to have, it would be good to have a formal process where a meeting might be requested by a council member. Or a particular developer with, of course, the topic, you know, marked ahead of time, designated ahead of time in the discussion, designated ahead of time. And that discussion, of course, would not be closed to the public, maybe it could be open to the public. So there's nothing, it's not going to be a meeting because there are less than three council members there. But it could be a productive way for developers, and I don't see it happening all the time. As you say, city manager, developers can come in and, and talk whenever, whenever they like. But this might be a more structured, formal way for developers to ask questions and maybe get their concerns. Out to staff that they may not be able to, because they do want to discuss those particular projects, which this meeting wouldn't be for. This would be for a, a more general approach for developers to get to know the city and, and to, I'm sorry, is there a problem? You shook your head. I mean, is that, is that a problem? I mean, they want to get the council, the developers that I talked to, not all of them have had a lot of relationship with the city. And it might be a good way in a framework that is polite and is conducive to discussion. And is something that could be productive and attended by council members so that everybody's a part of that, is it?
I think, I think that the discussion should be had between the council members, not the city manager, where the authority that's going to vote that in. I want to piggyback on things that you're asking, you're actually talking about. And just what's really ironic is that two meetings ago, I was, I was actually attacked by you saying that I had, I had voted on a project. Because I had been sitting at a meeting with a developer, which I didn't sit at. So here we are, actually, you're bringing in regards to something that actually occurred two months, two meetings ago, which I don't want to be part of. I think that, I think that a city council member creates policies, enacts policies. And hands it over to the city staff and the city staff meets with the developers. And then because at the end of the day, I don't want to be in a meeting, that when it comes back and they're asking for some kind of offsets, offsite improvements. And we voted, and because John Treheal sat at that meeting, all of a sudden, someone that is not, not on my particular good side is going to say, well, he sat at that meeting. There it is, he voted on that, I don't need to be there. I value my integrity more than what other people think I do. I believe that we as a city council member enact policies, we set policy, we adhere to the policy. We set policy. We adhere to the policy. We submit it. And then we let our city staff meet with the developers and they come back to us and say, hey, guess what? Ex-developer brought this project in. It's gonna cost us fifty million dollars. He's asking for some offsite improvements. It's open to the public. We discuss it. We give the people the, the right to come and tell us yes, no. And then we make a vote because we got voted in to do that. That's the process that I see that is the right process. I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the fact of, of, of getting two council members to go and sit at a meeting and, you know, they're able to look in at staff. And I don't see that. And, and, and two meetings ago, I was attacked because, you know, supposedly I had signs put up, some developer and a developer got some, but, but in reality, we're not here there, right? We're not, I don't wanna be put in that position. I don't wanna be put in that position. I just believe that the best case scenario in a municipal government, a municipal government has a management form of government where the manager is a, is hired by the city council. The city council creates the policies, hands them over to the city manager. The manager meets with them and says, these are the, these are the requirements. This is what we have to do. These are your regulations. And going case in point, going back to that, oh, where they drug dug in. We have developers asking for waivers of some policies that actually affect exactly what we were talking about that. Oh, if we don't, if we don't approve that and they stick to the policies, we won't have problems. So it actually goes back to what we want as a city council. We set the parameters. We say, this is the bar we wanna set. This is what we're gonna let our staff know that they need to adhere to, and that's it. That's my own opinion. I have no, if our, if our, the majority, the majority of our council says, hey, yeah, let's two city council members meet with the developers with our staff, then that's fine. But I, for my sake, for me, because I've experienced this, I don't want no, I don't want part of that because at the end of the day, a developer should only meet at city hall with our city manager and our staff and come back to us when they're wanting some kind of offset improvements, coming to a meeting and in public hearing, talk about it and ask our council if we're gonna approve it or through some closed session or something like that. But at the end of the day, right now, what we're asked, what they're asking for is, I can't approve it, not because I don't wanna approve it, but because I don't wanna be put in a position where I was two, two meetings ago. And I was asked that, hey, you, you approved that because that's the person you sat with. So I don't wanna do that. And I apologize if I'm gonna hurt any of Billy's feelings. But at the end of the day, that's my own opinion. I don't wanna be sharing a, sitting at a meeting where I'm gonna be making some kind of opinion where it's gonna end up coming backfiring me. Because I know at the end of the day, if the developer asks for offsite improvements, they're gonna come to the city council, they're gonna go to the, they're gonna go to the planning commission, go to the city council and ask it through the process and we're gonna have to approve it or deny it. That's the process and I wanna still respect the process.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Just to clarify, the council members' comments. Um, some council members are a little more sensitive about being labeled as doing, you know, illegal things than others, but I'm not gonna talk about that. I'm gonna talk about, you know, transparency. This is all for transparency. This is not for getting the fix in and getting, you know, really close with the developer and granting these offsite improvements, as the council member said repeatedly. We've had council member Mendoza Navarro talk about meeting with developers. So this is nothing new, folks. You know, council members have met with developers and as long as you keep those parameters and you keep those lines very clear and bright, you don't, you, you, you don't compromise your vote. You know, you, you don't give them your vote for, for their support for you in an election. You, you keep yourself at an arms-length distance. And at, but at the same time, you can really facilitate the actual development itself. And again, I love hearing this tonight because these are the parameters that we can agree on by making this a formalized process instead of just labeling contact with the developer as something sort of sleazy and potentially illegal. It doesn't have to be that way. It can be productive. So what I'm asking for tonight is actually the exact opposite of what council member Treheal is saying and implying. I'm asking for a transparent, bright-line process where a developer can come with a, two council members and meet with a member of the city staff to talk about development in the city, case closed. Nothing about fee waivers, nothing about improvements, none of that stuff, nothing about a particular project, but to get the lay of the land, as it were, so we can attract more business to Selma and more developers. I get communications from developers who just don't get the, the process with the city a lot of the time. And sometimes they have met with the city years back and now they're saying, hey, let's, let's talk with the city again. They kind of forgot how the process was or the process changed. So what I'm submitting to the council tonight for consideration for a future agenda item is to come up with a process whereby these meetings can take place in an open, honest and very transparent manner. And I'll make a motion for that or I'll at least give my vote for that for consensus. Does anyone else have a vote to support that?
And I'll second it. And I wanna add to that comment is there's so many times that we've heard, you know, it's not easy to work with Selma, you know, and developers will say that. We need to take that out of the works. We need to say Selma is a great town to work with. Because we hear that all the time. We hear it. Sanger's a great town to work with. Kingsburg's a great town to work with. Ridley's a great town to work with. Selma's too hard to work with. We need to get that out and we need to show them that that's not what we're about. We're about, we're bus- business friendly and we wanna work with people. So if there's an issue, why can't we be transparent? Why wouldn't we wanna work with the developer and let him address his issues or his project or what have you, you know? We wanna be business friendly. We're not saying, let's give away, let's do some favors. That's not what we're asking. Let's say, let's be business friendly and let's work with these people because we continue to get complaints and that's what we hear. Sorry, I'm just telling the truth.
Is there any other support for this, um, future agenda item? Council member Mendoza Navarro, do you support this future agenda item?
Um, no, on the basis of what the attorney advised.
Mayor Protem Cho, do you support this, um, agenda item for a transparent process whereby council members, developers and city staff meet?
Like a workshop?
No, it's like, it's just a, well, yeah, this is an agenda item to come up with a process to make sure some, some topics are off.
I thought we did a workshop once before when not all the developers came and it was.
Oh, that was a Selmas open for business, come bring all your projects. But that wasn't a specific process where we meet with each developer and we come to city council with them to meet with city staff.
The, the workshop you're referring to is, was actually a process-oriented workshop where we explain to the developers, this is what the process is. These are the policies that we're upholding. And we got a lot of really good feedback from that, from the developers, where it was more clear about how it is that a, a developer can go about building their project in Selma. So you're absolutely right. We had that discussion already with developers and, you know, and that is exactly the type of forum where those discussions should, should take place. I think what, what the mayor is requesting is something more specific to individual developers that request individual meetings, which is what, something that would, would put staff in a really poor position.
I, I would prefer, like I say, still go back to the workshop atmosphere because they could answer questions about those, right?
No, not necessarily. You have one of those big sta- I mean, how many of those have we had? One, one in four years. So they don't happen all the time. So this would be the ability to have. Did I finish please, City Andrew? We've had one in four years. And this would give developers who are maybe new to town or didn't, didn't remember the last large meeting that we had. And sometimes people learn in different ways. I mean, I don't know if you were a kitchen table learner, homework doer or a, or a desk in your bedroom homework doer. But we all learn different ways and developers learn different ways about the city. And some of them wanna be shepherded by, and have somebody with them from the community to talk about their project and to learn about the process. Not everybody learns from a seminar-type college atmosphere, you know, coming to a, a large get-together like that. They learn better individually. And at the end of the day, we just want more development quality, development in Selma.
But what would, what would be the difference between a developer in a workshop expressing our staff with our policies than two council members sitting in a meeting with developer and our staff by themselves?
Because the developer, that developer would have an urgent need or a need, you know, that.
There's an urgent need. There's an email sent to our staff and our staff follows the policy. At the end of the day, what you're really asking is you have a city attorney from the city of Selma and the city manager saying, this is not the right, they caution, this is a process. If every council member wants to vote on it, that's fine. But if you have your leading people, your city attorney and your city manager caution you from voting this, why would you vote it?
Um, because they're not. They're not getting what I'm saying. The information would be, um, general for the developer. It would be more specific than a workshop in terms of context because we would be sitting with that developer and asking specific questions about the city. What's, what's worked in the past.
City of Sanger projects being built, city of Kingsburg projects being built, city of Fowler's projects being built. They actually had a robust city council in the last ten, twenty years that actually had the courage to vote for infrastructure that's moving them along. Our city of Selma's been strapped for the last ten, twenty years and we haven't had infrastructure and we've done those votes. So there's a difference. That's, that's the apples to oranges. Right now, what we're asking is, what I'm asking is to respect what our staff is asking for and just follow the process that's been, that's, we're actually trying to move to, to be more restricted, to follow a policy rather than just, um, while west, come and sit at a meeting and, and having two council members with a developer and just talking. That's what I'm asking.
I get it. I brought it up and you say no, but so it's, so it's to all. What's your, what's your vote, Mayor Protem Cho?
I would prefer a workshop situation.
Okay, so that's a no. Okay, I get it. All right, I have another item I'd like to bring up for a future, um, agenda item. Thank you for the robust discussion too. At least we got it out on the record and the public can see this, uh, that the importance of this topic. Another topic I would like to bring up and as, as an agenda item for the future is I would like for the city council to consider making it mandatory for all attachments to come with an agenda item, to come with the agenda and not to be given to city council on the evening of the meeting sometimes. We get agenda, I mean, it just, it's hard, it's hard to know what's going on if we're not able to review. And it's hard for the public too, if we get agendas after the fact. I mean, if you look at the, the meeting, you know, there are a couple items, they're just place fillers where there's no, there's actually no agenda here and we didn't get it until the meeting itself. So what I would like for a future agenda item would be to make it mandatory that any attachments, any handouts or anything that people are gonna be using for meetings would appear in the agenda itself for the meeting.
So you wanna, you, if you, if, so what you're asking is for dialogue, to have an agenda item in dialogue in regards to items that are not actually fully, um, completed prior to the meeting?
Right, to make, in order to make it mandatory to complete those items to have.
I would entertain that discussion. If it was in regards to, if it's not on the agenda, then you know what? What?
No, I know we requested that and we, we have asked several times to have anything that we're going to have to, even if it's informational or an agenda item. We've asked to have that information provided to us prior to our meeting. And we continue to get items that we don't even have time to look at. I mean, that's happened several times. I mean, at one time, we had a hundred and seventy pages. I mean, how do you expect us to read something like that? And then you, they have a presentation. We need to be able to review it. And I'd like to do my, my homework, get my questions together and then present it. Because it doesn't give us a chance to even look at what we're doing when you're presenting an agenda item on the day of the meeting.
Are you finished, Councilmember Gera? So you're referring to the two items on the agenda that are PowerPoint presentations on this current agenda. Is that right, mayor?
Yes, I countless other previously. So many others previously.
Yeah.
Yeah, and normally it's a, it's a PowerPoint presentation that's not attached because first of all, there's a lot of slides. They don't look good in black and white, which is normally what, what the, um, agendas are, are printed in. And so we make them available because they're not, we make them available the day of the meeting because they're not necessary for any action item like the ones tonight. They were simply informational only. And so it's much more efficient and cost-effective to do that. If there's a situation where there's a hundred seventy-page document, well, we're not gonna print that for you and put it in your packet. We send it out either via email so that you can review it on your own time. So it's not necessarily attached, you know, to, to every, uh, individual agenda that we print. But those are always provided to you before, um, the council meeting. And so I'm not sure where that request is coming from. But as far as, you know, the PowerPoints like tonight, I, I think those are simply informational only items that we were not expecting council to make any sort of decision on. There are instances where we do need a little bit more time to put together the, the agenda packet item, right? Which we send out, you know, if the packet is published on Wednesday before the meeting, we might send it out on Thursday or Friday. But it's never the case where we send it out the day of or we give it to you in the meeting if you have a decision to make on that item. Again, you know, I meet regularly on the day of the meetings with our council members, Councilman Treheal, Mayor Protem Cho and Councilmember Mendoza Navarro to go over any items that are on the agenda, to address any questions they have. We reached out to the mayor and Councilmember Gera that it's never, we never have the opportunity to, to meet with you. And so it's, uh, it's very difficult to, to even know what kind of questions you will have ahead of time when, you know, we don't have the opportunity to meet with you. So I would encourage you to set up a time with, with me, with my office, to go over the agenda packet prior to the meeting so that I can answer any questions. Usually they're straightforward, um, you know, things that I can answer. But, you know, at the end of the day, if there is a decision that you have to make, you will not receive it on the day of the, of the meeting.
You know, I, I wanna, I wanna go back and the reason why I stopped and I wanna, I wanna inform everybody when I, when I, the reason why I stopped talking was because I actually caught myself in my mind asking, has there been something that you have left unopened or talked about at my standing meeting? I have a standing meeting with the city manager at nine o'clock on Monday morning, every Monday, not just the city council meeting. I have it every Monday. And we go through his proposal or whatever he's got going on and we go through it. And by the time I leave, he leaves my office, I have cross-referenced anything that's going on in regards to the city council meeting. That's the reason why I stopped and I actually said to myself, wait a minute. This is, this is not for me to discuss. And I'm just, you know, I don't know what everybody else thinks and what they, how they value all their participation to be a civic, civic leader. But on my end, I have to meet with him at least once a week. He's been good. I cancel sometime. He cancels sometime. He's out of town. But for me, that's, that's what I've worked with. So I don't have any, I don't have a problem with dialogue in regards to how the city's functioning, what the parameters are and what the, the, what's going on with the city council meetings.
You guys, I just wanna jump in real quick here. I think, I think we've kind of done it on all of them, but I just wanna caution you guys. We don't, the purpose of future agenda items is not to get into a discussion of the items. We wanna just simply focus on, do you guys wanna bring it up for the next agenda or not? Um, I don't wanna get into any Brown Act issues for actually discussing these items.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, but it's not just, just quickly, it's not just for council members that the agenda items are, the, the attachments are provided. It's also for members of the public for their education, which is why we have open meetings, which is why we all don't go join the, in the city manager's office on a Monday morning. We, we wouldn't fit for one. And two, that's not the point. The point of a public meeting is everybody coming to a council meeting and having their input, which is limited by not having all the information. We can go on, on different talks and that's why we should have this council item. Cause I, I very much look forward, I very much look forward to, um, getting into this topic with more depth and answering some of the items that we're hearing now. But for the purposes, as the city attorney has said, for Brown Act considerations, my topic that I'm proposing is an agenda item requiring, um, any attachments to be included with the agenda items when they are sent out to council, which is on the record, which is not just goes out to council members, but is available to members of the public to examine too. Like the garbage contract and the garbage rates, for instance. But anyway, um, that's the, that's the item that I'm putting out there. And is there any support for putting this on a future council? Does anyone else have any support for this item? Councilmember Mendoza Navarro, do you support this?
No, cause it, it's supported by the Brown Act, so, no.
I'm sorry? It's supported, I couldn't catch that last one.
I said, we're in compliance with the Brown Act, so no, I don't support it. Like, we're already governed by the Brown Act of what needs to get posted and what, what we need to get. So no, if it's in, if it's not in, if it's an informational item, then no. But I don't wanna get into that because we're going off topic and I have a couple of things already. But I don't wanna get into that because we're going off topic and I have a couple of things already. And so we're just going around and around discussing things and that's not the purpose of this item.
No, we're not. We're, we're moving city business forward. This is very important for city, for citizens to know this, whether, regardless of what you say. Um, any other council members have support for this item, putting it on a future budget? Councilmember Trujillo, are you good with putting this on? No, okay. Mayor Protem Cho? Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any um, items they would like to add for future agenda items?
I have a future, I, agenda item. Uh, what I'd like to do is, is, this one's gonna acquire faster because remember we're talking about the venture piece? The small venture piece. I'd like to see that by at least next because Raisin Festival is the first week of May, okay? So, you know, it should be at least, you know, for the smaller vendors, you guys gotta be working a little bit better on that one.
We were planning on bringing something on April first.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Oh, quick question for clarification. I had asked for a topic, um, homelessness because, or at an earlier council meeting. And I believe the response was it was gonna be included with the CIP or is it gonna be included in the budget? Or where are we on the homelessness topic or as an agenda item?
Yeah, it, it didn't really have anything to do with the budget, but we were coordinating um, additional uh, resources to be able to have a, a meeting or a, a conversation with um, beyond just the city and the city council. So we're still working on coordinating that.
Oh, great. Is there a timeline by any chance on that?
Uh, not a specific one yet. Uh, you know, it's just a matter of getting all the resource providers on the same page with regard to scheduling. Thank you.
I do have an item. One of them was, uh, Mayor Protem, um, she actually, uh, I was gonna just set a reminder about the, the business license um, topic. Um, so that's, that was part of it. And the other one was gonna be, um, I'm gonna be on Capitol Hill on April tenth. And so I'll be meeting with um, our federal officials. And so if there's any um, topics that uh, you'd like to have me bring up to our federal officials, if we could have something on the agenda so that we can um, discuss that on the first. Cause like I said, I'm going on the tenth. And of course, it's, it's um, specific to housing.
Council, do we have consensus on that item? Do we know Mayor Robertson, Councilmember Guerra, which federal officials? Do we know the names?
Our local officials are the ones that represent our areas in California. So our federal.
Our local one?
Our senator, no, not our local, our senator and our um,
Jim Costa.
And then our, our local representative.
Okay.
Which is?
Thank, thank you.
David Valladell.
Okay. Oh, I got another topic. Um, Councilmember, are you done?
So did it pass or no?
Do we have consensus, council?
Yes, you already got three. No, I'm not.
Okay.
Cause I, I think we got consensus, um, Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Thank you.
Are you done, Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yep, that's it.
Um, the contract with the city of Kingsburg and the city of Fowler for animal services? Are we gonna get that? I thought we brought that up a while back.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Uh, the city councils of Kingsburg and Fowler are currently considering those items first before we bring them to uh, our city council for approval.
But in the meantime, we're actually providing those services to those cities without a contract. Is that correct?
As, as it was before, um, and that contract will be uh, retroactive to January first.
I'm sorry, as it was before, when the city provided animal services in two thousand thirteen or when, what do you mean as it was before?
Um, so this, the shelter was already providing services to Kingsburg and Fowler. If, um, or not Fowler, excuse me, to the city of Kingsburg prior to the expiration of their current contract. That's what I meant. They were already providing services.
Okay, so the city is gonna be doing it just like the sc- second chance animal shelter did, is that correct?
No, the contract is gonna look a lot different.
Okay. All right. But it's, all right, great. Anybody else with any um, future agenda items?
Approved? Yep.
I believe we received consensus on your item, Councilmember Guerra.
Just, just making sure.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to departmental reports. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just a couple uh, quick items here. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank uh, Councilman Trujillo, Mayor Protem Cho, um, members of the community, uh, Louis Franco, Mike Valverde and um, Michelle Valverde. Um, and everyone who participated in the staff appreciation luncheon uh, last Friday. Um, it was a great turnout. Um, you know, we had a um, session in the morning where um, our department heads and myself uh, presented um, to our entire city staff um, about the direction of the city. You know, the level of service that we're providing to the community, our, our purpose statement, our values and, and the way that, in which we interact with the community every day. And then we went over to Pioneer Village for a delicious lunch um, prepared uh, by the folks I, I just mentioned. So thank you very much for that. Um, it was really, really, really appreciated. Um, and then uh, just on a personal note, but also uh, work related, um, I um, uh, welcomed a new member of my family on Saturday, uh, Brody, who we adopted from the animal shelter. Um, thank you. And he's a wonderful dog. Uh, he's a Labrador, so Labrador and Great Dane, so a pretty, pretty big guy. But thank you to the animal services team that was here earlier. They did a great job caring for him. I didn't know this at first, but he was actually the very first animal that they picked up um, when they took over. So happy to have him. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, City Manager, just a quick question for you. Forgot agenda items. I had a question from a um, a member of the community. They had an issue with code enforcement. Do we have a code enforcer working right now in the city?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, his name is Alex and I'm blanking on his last name. Um,
Heredia.
Heredia, thank you.
Are they throughout the whole city or?
Absolutely, yeah. They, they cover the entire um, city of Selma and we're working on, um, bringing on a second code enforcement officer.
Got you. So the current one covers the whole city while the city looks for the second animal, the second code enforcement.
They, they both will cover the entire city.
But for right now with one, the one is covering the entire city, is that correct?
Well, um, I think we have a backup um, still from fire department. Um, so actually we have two code enforcement officers currently covering the city.
So you've got a fire, a personnel from the fire department um, doing code enforcement right now, correct?
Yeah, and not to get too much into that, but it's because of um, you know, you know, light duty requirement um, that, so yes.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, and, and uh, Deputy City Manager uh, just reminded me, I'd like to update the council on the status of um, the funding that was approved for the Amberwood uh, sewer trunk line. Um, on Friday, while we were doing the staff appreciation, we were working pretty diligently as well to, to close the funds. Um, because we did receive um, the bids that came in uh, for uh, the Amberwood trunk line. Um, and we're excited to bring those, uh, the contract award for that project to council on April first. But we were able to close on the funding first on Friday, um, and uh, for seven point two million dollars. So that'll, will open up the entire northeast side of Selma for development of about twenty-five hundred new homes. So very exciting phase in our, uh, the growth of our city. So I'd like to thank our city staff and everyone that worked diligently, including our city attorney um, on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing to report.
Uh, Deputy City Manager?
Uh, I think two of my items that I was gonna bring up that were coming forward at a future council meeting have been discussed. The review of the business license fees for vendors, um, as well as the development uh, project update. Um, I just wanna also um, bring up the Amberwood trunk line. Um, I've already received calls from numerous developers about the interest in that part of town as part of that project. Um, in terms of both developers, property owners, brokers, financiers. My phone has been ringing off the hook about that. So it's a, it's a great sign. Um, staff is prepared to carry all those items forward. We had numerous developers checking in as well as during the bid opening. Was it still going on? Or did we close financing? So developers are watching very closely with that project.
Thank you. All right, Administrative Services Director?
Our Office three sixty-five implementation is totally done. So I'm, we were, I think, clients of ninety-four percent in compliance as of Friday. So they had to have everything done as of Thursday. And Friday, we switched on, we activated, and so we're ninety-four percent compliant. So if you on council have not done it, please let me know. I cannot email you because you cannot get into your email because you have to have that multi-factor authentication downloaded. But we can definitely provide you that information in order to get it done.
Thank you.
I need to check with you.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, that, that significantly improves our um, you know, vulnerability to cyber attacks, which is the main reason that, that we went into that system.
Okay. Mayor Chief Donovan Fulner? Oh, sorry, Community Services Director Amy Smart. I'm saving the best for last. Come on.
How did you miss the la- the loudest of the bunch? Um, good evening, Mayor and council members. I do have quite a few things to update today, but I'll go as quick as I possibly can. Um, the first and, and biggest is I hope you all will join us tomorrow at three P M. at Bruntlinger Park. We will be doing our groundbreaking ceremony. Um, the um, project is anticipated to take about three weeks, give or take, obviously with weather. Um, so we're very excited about that. Um, immediately following, um, we will also be holding, um, or not immediately following, but when the project is complete, um, we will be hosting a ribbon cut, cutting ceremony. So we're, we're excited for this project. It's long overdue. Um, and, and I just, I wanna thank our Public Works Department for working really hard um, to ensure that everything is ready to go and, and this is as smooth project as possible. Um, so we hope we see you there. Again, it'll be at three P M. tomorrow. Um, March thirtieth, we will be having our spring extravaganza. It'll send Easter egg hunt, pictures with the, the Easter bunny, uh, scavenger hunt, activities for the kids. Um, other agencies will be there. It, it's just gonna be a great time. This is free for our community. It'll be again, March thirtieth from twelve to two at Pioneer Village. Um, we're also very excited to announce a new program that we are bringing in April. It's called Pickup Sports in the Park. Um, and what we'll be doing is traveling um, certain Saturdays out of each month to each of our parks throughout our local community and playing, whether it's flag football or maybe soccer, um, and then providing maybe a nutritious snack for our, our kids in those communities. So we're excited about that, to bring that program and get kids out um, on the weekend. And it'll also help our department decide um, and plan for the future, what events or what um, sports, you know, kind of have an interest, et cetera, et cetera. So we're really excited about that. Again, that event will be free to the community. Um, so keep posted on that. Um, we will also be having a senior center dance on March twenty-second, this Friday. If you guys have not seen our senior center dances, our seniors, our seniors go all out. They dress up, they have a fantastic time. So we're really looking forward to that. Um, at our art center, um, we will be hosting um, the C B T C graduation um, at the end of the month. We hope everybody will join us then. Um, our next show will be Matilda. If you guys have not seen Matilda, it is, is gonna be a fantastic show. We've actually partnered with our local library for some fun, fun things going on. So, so we're excited about that. Um, and last, at the art center is our school shows will be coming in April eighteenth. Um, if you guys are not familiar with that program, we actually invite um, local schools to come and enjoy a show during the day. So kids get um, a, a, and, you know, they get exposed to the, the local theaters. Um, what's great about that is I think this is the second, maybe third year that we've done it. Um, and this year is the first year that we didn't really have to do any advertising. The schools have been reaching out to us because they're that excited. Um, for a reference point, we did the Little Mermaid. It was two shows, or two days, uh, four shows, and we had almost six hundred students participate from Selma. So um, we're really looking at ways that we can um, start doing more at the art center um, for the local community. And I think this just speaks to the creativity um, that we're getting and the excitement that we're building there. Um, the last thing I did wanna start, or I wanted to mention is that we have signed and we are getting ready to start the kickoff for our parks master plan. Um, I'm incredibly excited about this master plan because not only is it gonna give us an opportunity to review our current assets, um, look at our history, um, also identify any barriers for our current assets, but also give us a plan on the future on how we can expand our programs, our green space, or I'm sorry, our open space in our parks. So this is a comprehensive parks master plan. Um, we anticipate it taking, you know, six to nine months. Um, we'll be working with Q K. with that. So um, thank you Deputy City Manager King for helping me get that going. Um, and this will also include, include a lot of public outreach. So this is a great opportunity for the city of Selma and the, the residents of Selma to really get involved in the future of our parks and open space. That is all I have for now, I think.
Thank you.
It's, the senior dances are open to anyone that feels that they would like to join. However, we typically see fif- ages fifty-five and better.
Perfect.
It is a great time and we would love nothing more than to see some of our wonderful firefighters attend that dance.
Chief Donovan, Dancing With The Stars, Fulner?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I was requested to give an update regarding an incident that took place uh, yesterday afternoon uh, on Cam Avenue. There's not a ton of information we can give due to us not being the authority, uh, authority having jurisdiction. Uh, other than we had five personnel assigned to that incident, uh, one division chief and two fire agents to support uh, our partners in Fresno County. Um, I have nothing further after that.
Great, thanks very much. Okay, City Clerk, Public Information Officer?
Mayor, council members, members of the public, um, I would like to update you all on the freeway Caltrans project. Uh, I will be as surprised as everyone else to advise that the last phase change is uh, starting tonight as scheduled. So I am so excited that they are on schedule. I know that Caltrans staff is as well. And um, the schedule starts tonight at eight P M. The contractor will be working, uh, opening, working on opening the Second Street off ramp and the Floral Avenue on ramp that was currently closed. The, once those two are open, the contractor will then begin to move K rail, complete striping and do all of the building and contractor stuff that they do in order to close the southbound uh, ninety-nine off ramp to Floral Avenue and of course, the connector ramp to southbound State Route forty-three. So um, that is on schedule to happen tonight. And as Caltrans staff has mentioned to us previously, um, this is the shortest phase. And so I wanna reiterate that to the public and to council and to staff. This is the shortest phase that will happen and it is expected that this should be completed in May.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, Public Works Director?
Hmm, thank you. Uh, so Raina just touched on the first topic I was gonna touch on, which is big news about the uh, opening of the on ramp at Second Street or the off ramp and the on ramp at Floral Avenue. I know that that was a, a matter of contention in our last meeting. So that's good. That's moving forward. That should make some business owners happy. Um, we are continuing to clean the storm drain infrastructure, which will continue to cl- uh, collect data, uh, video footage and any other information we can to bring to council for a presentation when we're done cleaning that infrastructure to give you a better, more thorough look at what we're actually dealing with citywide. So we're continuing to work on that. Um, we did have the bid opening for Salazar Center last Thursday. Unfortunately, we had zero bidders on that job. Um, we are, David Horn and myself, along with other city staff are gonna reconvene and go back through the R F P and get our heads together and try to figure out what our next direction is. I think that there were many factors that went into not having bids on this project. Um, uh, I think the biggest factor is that we tried to do this as cost effectively as possible due to the construction that's currently gonna take place at the senior center. Um, so for funding reasons, we tried to put this out with a, a set of plans. It was the original set of plans for the building, which there has not been any major modifications done to since it was constructed. And then we identified the uh, the issues with the building that needed to be addressed in this bid. Um, a lot of the contractors uh, had conversations with David Horn and expressed that it was vague. Um, they really wanted to see a set of plans for it, uh, new set of plans showing the work. So again, we are gonna reconvene and see what direction we need to go to get that thing off the ground and get it, get it, get it functioning the way that we've talked about doing, uh, so that we're, we're in that process. Um, the bid opening for the senior center is this Thursday, which we're excited about. Um, we, we, I don't feel that we are going to have a zero uh, uh, bid submission on that one. I think that we had plenty of people uh, during the mandatory job walk that appeared for the job walk and, and uh, had serious interest in the project. So I, I feel very confident that that one will go this Thursday, um, once we get the bid opening done. So we will keep you posted on that. Um, with the storm drain, we're also working with uh, Q K. They're being contracted to do our storm drain master plan, which is going to tie right into our city master plan, our maintenance plans for our roadways, for our infrastructure. It's gonna help us identify some of the stuff that we've talked about this evening. Um, so Q K. is actually working on that. And Assistant City Manager, if you wanna jump in?
Yeah, um, and I-
Yeah, and I thought about this after my update. The two master plans that are underway are somewhat related because we can have storm drain infrastructure that also provides open space resources, right? We have an existing dog park that is also drainage basin. So having these two items go together, I think is, is good to coordinate where land needs to be acquired for future growth or future projects and identify infrastructure deficiencies as well as, you know, a 10-year, 15-year CIP to acquire land, replace pipe, what have you, set policies for how parks are developed, what type of parks are developed, pocket parks, community parks, neighborhood parks, regional parks, trails, what type of basins need to be provided, are they recharge basins, are they retention basins, are they dual-use basins? All of these things, it's, it's great that these two master plans are kicking off at the same time because there's a lot of information that can be used for both. But these type of master plans are exactly the type of documents and guiding policies for future growth that need to be updated on a regular basis and done in a manner that can be utilized for future budgetary purposes, for future CIP projects as well as grant opportunities. And I just wanted to add to that. We're all really excited about kicking those off.
Basically, we're pouring the foundation right now. We will build off that foundation. Foundation needs to be poured and this is the first step in getting that foundation established for future development. So thank you, thank you for your input, Jerome. Moving on, we are still working on the RFP for Bretlinger for the fence and the sidewalk. Unfortunately, this last week, we identified that there is also chain link fence the entire run down the CID ditch on Orange Avenue that has been literally destroyed from vagrants, homeless. I don't know what it's from, but the fence is destroyed. So we are trying to get the, one of the contractors that gave us prices for the wrought iron fence to also include pricing for the fence along Orange Avenue. We feel that it's a liability, having the fence the way that it is because of the kids being on the field and the canal there when they have water in it. So it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. And it's been hemmed together many times over the years. It needs to be replaced. So we are looking at that as well. That RFP is forthcoming. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Director. Police Chief Alcoraz?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In front of you have the February Part One Crime Stats from the Department of Justice. If you have any questions? If you have no other questions, I have nothing else to report.
Just getting this, so.
Sure.
Maybe next meeting. It's late. Anybody have any questions about the crime stats at this point? I didn't even see this. Question Chief, yesterday after hours, at High Street, there were a couple of units in the alleys back there. Was there an issue back there? Usually don't see units. Are you knowledgeable about that?
No, I wasn't made aware of anything. So I'd imagine there was no violent crime.
We saw it in our cameras. So we were just wondering if there was an issue downtown.
So our patrolmen do regular checks of the alleyways for homeless or people that are not supposed to be, as the council and our community is requesting. I don't know exactly.
Do they usually park at both ends of the alley?
Mr. Mayor, I don't get calls unless there's some critical event. Otherwise, I'm, I'm off work. Trying to get some time for myself. So I apologize for that.
Thanks. Thanks for the update.
Can I address a complaint that I received?
Sure.
From citizens, they're asking me, why is it okay for the homeless to burn the pellets at Lincoln Park when they don't even get to use their fireplaces? And nobody's doing anything about it. And I mean, I have to, I have to tell you that I see it every day. I mean, I see them burning pellets. And I'm just wondering how is that acceptable?
Oh, I can't tell you. I would, what I would recommend is when, when citizens see that, to give us a call immediately. We'll send an officer out. That's, that's what I say. If they have food on the grill, then they're cooking something. So I, you know, we'd have to, each incident is separate from itself. So we have to investigate each call. So I would really recommend that as citizens, if they feel there's a violation, to give us a call and we'll send an officer out.
Well, they mentioned, why would we want to put fireplaces there? I mean, sorry, grills there? Possibly, you know, they could start a big fire or why don't we just take them out, period?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a discussion that the council could take up and, and, you know, consider removing those sorts of facilities from our parks. I mean, which, you know, could be a contentious topic to address, but not necessarily in this type of forum.
Okay. They also mentioned the trash, that they go around the trash bins, especially across the street over where the jewelry places, they go through their bins and they trash, trash all over the place. And then they go to the corners of Second Street and the trash bins, they just throw the trash, they go through it and they just trash all over the place. The owner of the, behind us, funeral home, he goes around and picks up and he just can't believe how much trash he says he sees on a daily basis.
Councilman Garrett, what I recommend is have those business owners give us a call. What I would say is deploying resources accordingly is, is a difficult task, right? I, as you can see on our, our crime stats, we handle a variety of calls for service on top of trying to be proactive. If you look at the bottom of our crime, Part One Crime Stats, there's a statistic there that we don't calculate in DOJ Part One Crime Stats, which is we took 10 guns off the streets. I will tell you that our focus for 2024 is taking guns off the street. My priority is violent crime, reducing violent crime. If you watch the news in our region, in the national and state, violent crime is up across the nation. My intention of coming here to the, to the city of Selma is to reduce violent crime. Does that mean I'm going to stop it completely? No. I'm going to deploy my resources accordingly to address those topics. It's something very personal to me. We have an officer who was killed with a firearm. So it's at the top of my priority list. We try to get to every crime that we can. But the reality is we're not going to be able to address every issue. We really count on our community members to contact and reach out to us so that they can get us from where we are to where we need to be. That is an enormous challenge.
I agree with you, Chief. I believe that our safety is first priority and getting any crime, guns, you name it. Get it, I, I agree with you. But these are things, you know, I have to address. And the other issue was the shopping cart. They said if there's a shopping cart in the corner, can she, can Public Works still pick it up or no?
What I would, what I would, and I know a lot of people don't understand about liability and the homeless and their rights to property. It, it's extremely liableless and I would recommend that we tread lightly in dealing with these type of issues. I know they're an annoyance. If, if you've seen, I regularly visit Lincoln Park myself, as well as my staff. And we do our best to make our presence known without creating liability for our community and for our city. So that, that's what I would say is that we got to be, we have to be extremely careful because that property, if it is with someone, it belongs to that person. And taking that property from them could put us in an extremely liableist position. If you, if you are familiar with the city of Fresno, it had a lawsuit about 12 years ago. And I think the payout was about, I couldn't tell you, but it was in the millions. And our unhoused population is extremely knowledgeable with regards to what we can and cannot do. A lot of our current criminals know exactly what, which officer is driving what vehicle or can just tell by the silhouette and the vehicle coming down the street. So our, our criminals are extremely sophisticated and are knowledgeable of their rights. So I just, when we talk about the homeless, which, you know, within the unhoused, we do our best. But we just have to be very, very careful how we tread in dealing with them because they do have rights.
Now, I get that. But if it's an empty shopping cart and it clearly says Costoless or it says United Market, you know it doesn't belong, it belongs to the business owner.
I, I would like to say we're extremely excited. Our code enforcement officer started three weeks ago. We're getting him up to speed with, you know, the, the different databases they have to navigate. Getting, right now finding a car, a vehicle that they can drive and, and working on those things. I've taken him out in my car personally and said, hey, these are the things that I want addressed every day. You know, I'm sure his head is spinning because I'm throwing things at him that I want addressed. For instance, you know, Northbound 99 at Floral Avenue, Caltrans came up and moved some unhoused person along and they were set up the very next day. So we're working with Caltrans to not just get them moved along, but then get the trees pruned up so that we can see. And then maybe we can be a little more proactive because it is difficult to see. But things like that. So, you know, there's a myriad of issues that we're trying to, to kind of address for aesthetics because we want our city to be beautiful and we want our community members or people visiting Selma to say, hey, this is a beautiful city. And we're working diligently in that since I, as I have been from day one. I've been extremely diligent and, and that's why code enforcement is coming under my umbrella because I feel it's a very valuable tool and that we need to use that resource as much as possible. But additionally, having the right people to understand the mindset, standards and expectations that we have so that we can move our city forward with the aesthetics. And then the other things that we do criminal, like deal with criminal matters, correct? So what I tell you is when you see trash on the ground, I pick it up myself. My staff will tell you, I'm always dumping trash out of my car. It's an annoyance to me just because I believe in caring for our community. And I'm the first person that's out there picking up trash and, and that's what's pushed down to my staff. And, you know, we're, we're going to get there as we work together with our community members. And that's really kind of the narrative I've been pushing when we do coffee with the cop religiously. And we're out meeting with our community members. So.
Right. Any other questions for Police Chief Alcoraz? With that, one of the council reports, Council Member Mendoza Navarro?
Hi, yes. So I don't have too much to report. I just wanted to say thank you to Public Works Director. I didn't get to say anything when you gave your presentation. Great work. It's, it's, you know, those kinds of things are kind of things that, you know, we should really keep an eye on. The other thing, I really don't have any business, but I do have some personal things, on personal notes. I wanted to congratulate the Los Paisanos of Selma High School because they took first place in a couple of competitions down south. And so I don't know if anybody knows that, but the, the high school class took first place in a couple of areas. And then I am actually not there because I am down, down in Solvay attending a, the 23rd Annual Housing Agency. It's actually California Affordable Housing Agency Retreat. And basically, the, the people that are here, the stakeholders, are people from Washington. There's one person here, he's the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs at the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. And then we also have someone from the State of California Department of Development Tool Services. He's actually the Housing Finance Project Manager. And so I've been picking both of their brains on all the different types of funding sources that there are. And we did learn about a different type of housing because we talk about affordable housing, we talk about, you know, housing for the homeless. There's a lot of different types of housing, but there's not really a lot of talk about the, the missing middle, which is actually the working class, right? The ones that can't, that don't meet that 50% threshold or AMI threshold. So they did present to us a funding source that really targets the working. It's called the Workforce Housing. And so I'm really excited because there's different ways that we can actually increase our housing to make it affordable for like the nurses or the people that have, you know, loans, educational loans and, you know, they're not, again, they're not meeting that 50% threshold, but they are, you know, can't afford a regular house. So I'm really excited of everything that I'm, I'm learning down here and I can't wait to, to bring back things to, to the table, especially if we have that homeless workshop. There's just a lot. So that's actually one of the big topics that we're going to talk about when I'm in Washington DC is the homelessness crisis across the nation. So other than that, I don't have anything, anything else to report. Thank you.
Council Member Tree Hill?
Not much. I just want to thank, reiterate, first, I thank my staff, thank all the community members that came out and helped us on Friday. It was, I just want to say that it was, it was a really nice event, able to, to just thank our staff for all the hard work they've been doing. And, you know, I think that it was, it was really nice. I also want to thank my colleagues for providing breakfast to the, for the Public Works. But all in all, all that represented was just the community coming out and thanking our staff for all the hard work that you guys do. And we really appreciate you guys. And we, when I talked to the city manager about that, we were just talking about just, you know, nothing else but just thanking our staff for all the hard work that they do and just providing a meal and breaking bread and talking. It was real nice to see people just laugh and, and, you know, our staff just work together to collaborate and just laugh. And so it was really nice. So aside of that, thank you guys again. And at the end of the day, we just want to thank you for all the hard work you guys are doing. Thank you.
The member Karen?
I attended the ribbon cutting for the Central Valley Multi-Services. And for the owner is Brenda Solis. This is her second ribbon cutting. She was here six years ago when she first started and now she's actually a building owner and is providing these services. She has a really nice office. She gave us a tour and it was, it was really nice to see her being advancing and partnering with the city of Selma because, you know, she could have went somewhere else, but she stayed with Selma. The other thing, I attended a Center Point meeting, which, when I was sitting on that board, it was called Five Cities. So I'm glad that they finally came to Floridian to call themselves Center Point. And what that is, is seven cities that meet together. I believe it's seven cities now. And they meet together once, once every quarter, I believe. It's four meetings a year. And they talk about what each city can do to support each other. So it's really nice to hear. What they want to do is they're promoting a, to showcase your city. So they want us to pick a restaurant so that they can showcase that restaurant. Who showcases city of Selma? Three, I mean, the three restaurants that I considered were Kettleman's, Sal's and Legends. Those were the three. And what they're saying is that we have to get them, whoever would like to participate, they'd be hosting it. And they come out, put it live stream, kind of like what Dale Yarong does, where he goes and does his tasting, but not at that level yet. And they're requesting a basket to be provided to the ambassador. This ambassador comes out and does the showcase and the live stream and promotes the city. And in, to pay that person, because these persons, these people don't get paid, we have to provide a basket of what promotes Selma. What, you know, we could put wine, you can put gift cards, you can, that's kind of what they're saying. So I wasn't very clear on that and maybe Mayor Pro Tim can kind of clear that in regards to exactly what they need. But it was really a nice meeting. I was kind of glad to sit on it and find out what's going on with the other cities. Kingsborough did mention that they had a few restaurants coming in and they also got approved for the Phase Four Kingston Estates. Ridley was another, another city that was approved for another home development for estate homes. And I was kind of sad, but now I'm really happy that I got to hear today that we're going to be building some new homes. So Pro Tim will be able to take that with her next time. So that's, that was great. And then. And then the other thing is um, just, this is just cleanup. I would say in the future, if you're, I'm not sure who dropped off my packet, but they dropped it off in front of my home, well, on my, I guess on my table. And I didn't know about it. Normally, they inform me that they're going to drop off my packet at my home. Or they bring it to the office. This time I didn't know about it, so I was out there all night. So if someone, you know, if you can at least let me know that you're going to drop it off at my house, I'd appreciate that. That's it.
I apologize. Councilmember, we'll make sure to coordinate better next time. Mayor Pro Tim Chell?
Yes, I also attended the ribbon cutting at the Central Valley Multi-Service. This company is very, offers quite a bit of services, payroll, bookkeeping, taxes, human resources, immigration, fax and email, and live scan and fingerprint service. So that's a really, a really neat business to be in Selma because you can go to one place and figure out what you need and they can help you out on it. Yes, also, I did attend the city employees appreciation day. I got to cook for all you guys. That was pretty fun. I don't normally do barbecue, but I did. So it was great to see all you guys out there, you know, just relaxing and having a nice lunch. So thank you for coming out and I, I say, appreciate all your hard work. Another thing I'm going to remind you on the 28th is the Chamber Awards Dinner. So if you guys haven't got a ticket, that'd be a nice one to go to. To showcase your really pretty important people for the year. Business of the Year, Citizen of the Year, Ag Business of the Year, Distinguished Service of the Year and a Junior Citizen of the Year. So that'd be really kind of neat to go say thank you, congratulate them. And it'll be March 28th at the Legends. On my personal note, I actually worked as a docent at the Kearney Mansion this last weekend. My first, my first shift and it's for my Chinese American museum project. And that was pretty interesting. You just have to, people came through and I just kind of explained my story or their story or whatever. I was there for, I throw in my own story with the, the ancient stuff. I'm pretty ancient too, that's why. But next, I have two dates next month. If you guys want to come see me, it'd be great. It's going to be April 13th and April 20th. And you do have to call in and, and reserve your spot. You can't just walk in there. So, so it'll be good. Welcome to come and see us. Thank you.
Okay, I had a executive director for COG subcommittee meeting. I'm part of that group that's interviewing executive search firms for the next COG director, which is really important for our transportation funding in our county and our city. I attended a joint SKF Board and Policy Advisory Council meeting to review five-year sewer rates, which are unfortunately going to increase. Now, the 218 process starts where the ratepayers will be notified. It's, if anyone wants to know a little bit more in-depth about the rates, there's a lot going into that. There are a lot of projects that are going to be part of that. And SKF is also, as you heard from our Public Works Director, they are looking at their lines as well to make sure that those lines, our lines in the R and R, the restoration refurbishment part of the budget is, is sufficient. You know, the, the bottom line is the money's got to come from somewhere. And unfortunately, there's just never enough to go around. Wish the, the rates didn't have to increase, but it's our job to make sure it's the lowest possible increase for the ratepayer. Um, I attended that Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting for Central Valley Multi-Services. Brenda's done a, a great job over there, neighbor. Hopefully she'll be part of the, the, the bid here so that she can have, have input on the downtown that she's an integral part of. I want to thank my two coaches, Rose and our goddaughter, Scarlett, who cheered me on at the Rocky Hill Olympic Triathlon this Saturday. And with that, we are going to call this meeting over. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Good night.